We should have mom.
We could do that.
That's what it does.
Well, we we stick the chief on the end for a reason. That's right. It's not a meeting, I'm setting.
Hannah Rasmussen.
Glad to have you. I don't know why you're here, but welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
She's like, I've been here.
They've been like here every week.
I know, I was thinking about it.
The first one maybe?
She went to the first one, I went to the second one.
But I wonder if I was there when.
Oh, was that theirs? Another sister.
You're related to them?
Yeah, that's her.
I know, I know.
They haven't done the expansion.
Oh.
It's been a fun project.
Derek.
I want to tell you, Dave, just a quick.
Pretty sure I stay. Close. You guys don't get. These are, these are.
Okay, we're ready to get going. City council meeting tonight, Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand twenty-four in Spanish Fork City. Thank you all for joining us in the council chambers and thank you for everybody joining us online and around the world as well. We appreciate it. And we've got a a big agenda tonight that we'll try to get to in a timely manner. So we appreciate everybody being here again. We'll start like we always do in Spanish Fork with a prayer and a pledge. Councilman Euler will take care of the spiritual thought, and then we'll turn to Councilwoman Beck to lead us in the pledge. Councilman Euler?
Thank you, Mayor. Just with it being the holiday season, wanted to share with everybody a very Merry Christmas, but also I shared this when I met with the seniors the other day. Just invite everyone to look around outside of yourselves, check your neighbors, check on those that may be lonely. I know the holidays for some individuals can be very difficult as they deal with loneliness and other, other stressful issues. So just keep an eye out on your neighbors, do what you can to serve and, and help others also have a very Merry Christmas. That being said, let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, we are so grateful that we have the opportunity tonight to be here. We're so thankful for the city of Spanish Fork, that we live where we do and enjoy the many benefits and the beauties that surround us. We're so thankful, Father, for the freedoms that we enjoy living in the United States, and so thankful for those that serve to protect those freedoms. Bless them and bless their families. We're grateful for our first responders who work hard to keep us safe and to help the citizens of Spanish Fork. Bless them as well. Bless us as we make decisions tonight, that we can do so with thy guidance, with thy instruction, and that we can do what's best for the community of Spanish Fork. We are so grateful for the opportunity to serve our residents and thankful for them. We're grateful, Father, for this time of year, when we have the opportunity to reflect on and celebrate the birth of our Savior. Help us that we can do as he did and serve those around us. We pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand and repeat the pledge.
I.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Euler. Thank you, Councilwoman Beck. Takes us to item number four on the agenda, the public comments section. I'll just read this message that we like to, to remind everybody in the public comments section. To be considerate of everyone attending the meeting, please try to limit your comments to three minutes if possible. We'll have a timer up on the, on the overhead there. If there's somebody that wants to take a little bit more time, please let us know that you're a spokesperson for a group. Again, this is for any item that's not on the agenda, just somebody that wants to address the mayor and council on any public comment item. Please come up and state your name so Tara could get it in the minutes and address the mayor and council. If there's anyone that would like to come up, please do so. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Savannah Hansen, and I'm here with. I have just been going around to different city councils around the area, all the way up through US six, because we're trying to get a, we're trying to get letters of support to get enough money to get funding for a safety project up on US six and then Thistle, US eighty-nine. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that area. Lots of accidents have happened there, and we're trying to get the US government to help us out. So I'm here just asking for your assistance to get some letters of support so that we can eventually get that done. This board here has all of the benefits of what the project is going to be, as well as a little map. It's just a simplified version of an overview of the project. And it's going to start in twenty twenty-five, and then it'll be all done in twenty twenty-seven if we get the funding that's needed. So I just came with a bunch of letters that are already filled out with, with what needs to be said, and we're just looking for signatures, as well as some personal statements if applicable. I'm just going to hang around at the end, and then if you'd like to help sign, that would be awesome. Do you have any questions for me?
You're going to stay here all night for that?
Yes.
It's going to be a long one.
That's okay, I'll be here. Yep, we need the signatures, so.
Seth, any thing from Savannah? If she sticks around and has those letters, can.
Yeah, I think you're looking for individual, individual support. Are you, or are you looking for the city council's support?
Both.
Okay, I think for the city council, we probably need to have it be agendized so that you could take a position of, of some kind, but individually, you, you, I, anybody in the audience can certainly express their, their thoughts however they want to.
Perfect.
Thank you. Savannah, put in context, six and eighty-nine, eighty-nine is what comes off of Highway six that heads towards Fairview, Mount Pleasant.
Yep.
Area that way, right?
Exactly, yeah. They're going to try and build an underpass so that instead of crossing over the traffic, cars can go under this underpass and then merge on accordingly.
Is there a way you could maybe email us the text, and we could email you a letter back?
Yes, a hundred percent. Yeah, I can a hundred percent do that and get all that information via email as well.
That's what I would do. That's what I like to do.
She'll have, somebody has all of our email addresses here.
Just reach out to you. Okay, perfect.
Thank you, Savannah.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment? Seeing none, thank you. We'll move to council comments, and we'll start on this end with Councilman Marshall tonight for council comments.
I don't have any tonight.
Well, that was quick.
Yep.
Okay. Councilwoman Beck, he yields his time to you.
Okay, I just want to wish Spanish Fork Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I hope everyone's safe and happy out there. That's all I have.
Councilman Euler?
Just want to remind everybody of the great activities that we have down at our senior center. If you're not participating in our senior center, please, please come and join, join them. Great group of people, amazing food with the lunches that they prepare. They've got a Christmas dinner coming up this week. So just want to encourage any of our seniors that are not actively participating in our senior center to get involved and come and make some new friends. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Euler. Councilman Carden?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for the lights parade that we had just a couple weeks ago and the tree lighting. It was awesome. Lots of fun things there. And then also just kind of echo the message that's been said. Wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year as we head into this holiday season. Be safe, look out for each other. Let's make sure that this holiday season is great for everyone. So that's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Carden. Councilman Took?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just one item, a quick item for me tonight, just to kind of echo what Councilman Carden's just said about the Winter Lights Parade. It's the event, if you didn't know about it or you didn't attend this year, it's held right after Thanksgiving. I felt like it was a big success. It's, it's one of those few events throughout the year that, for me at least, where I get to work with all the, the programs that I get to serve on and serve with throughout the year. So Miss Spanish Fork program, you know, we were here at the library lining up with Parks and Recreation, with the Chamber of Commerce, and I, it was just a lot of fun. Wonderful tradition for so many inside and outside of Spanish Fork. And although cold, it was absolutely a fantastic time. So if you didn't get to check it out this year, please put on your calendar for next year, reach out with any questions, but it is, it is a lot of fun, and thanks everyone for participating and being there, and, you know, we had a great time. So, and then happy holidays, everyone, Spanish Fork, and that's all I've got tonight, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you. Kathleen, do you need anything from the, you bet, please come up? I wish you'd wear a more festive sweater for council meeting.
This was the best I could do. We had our holiday luncheon today. We, we combined new networking with our business of the month to kind of cut down on the activities. Everyone invested heavily in the Winter Lights Parade. So today we celebrated Jamie Cabral and Mountain Mike's Pizza for our business of the month, and as well as new networking. It was a, it was a great activity. We filled up the entire place. It was standing room only. Everyone that was coming in to get, you know, for something else thought Mountain Mike's was really happening, so hopefully that was great for her. And upcoming, we just have our annual gala on January twenty-ninth at six thirty PM, so hopefully you all put that on your calendars and attend. We're getting all those awards figured out. So, Mr. Mayor, if you would help me with your Mayor's Choice Award, I did send you, I don't know if you saw my email, I sent you a list of just members that we have, if any of those jog your memory. We're getting up there in numbers, so if you needed help with that. But yeah, we are, we're getting ready for the annual gala. So that's January twenty-ninth at the Amavi Event Center at six thirty. So that's all I've got. Thanks. Happy holidays.
Appreciate it. Okay, my council comments tonight, just, just maybe off, maybe leading more into the future of what you're going to see in twenty twenty-five as, as residents in Spanish Fork and businesses, a meeting today with a landowner in Spanish Fork was discussion about what's going to take place on, on that land, and it just impressed and re-impressed upon me of kind of the dynamics of, of Spanish Fork and what we've grown up to be. This particular landowner is an investment, a total investment of when all things are said and done, as far as improvements underground and, and above ground that we'll all see, is well into the five hundred million dollar range, so approaching half a billion into just one project in Spanish Fork with, which just kind of blew my mind a, a little bit. And, and when you count in the development of the airport around some of these areas, there's, there's private companies at our airport currently spending a hundred million dollars each into a project, so two hundred million dollars of private investment into our airport, along with a development like this, that, that quickly will, will reach one billion dollars of, of private investment into our city, into an area. It made me think of why I say what's coming in twenty twenty-five is, I think, I think these older buildings that are at the end of their economic life that people see in Spanish Fork, I know my family's connected to both the Sugar Beet Factory and, and the Del Monte Building. When those were built a hundred years ago, they were huge companies, huge corporations that, that people worked at, made a living at, and, and now they're, they're at the end of their economic life. But it's interesting, just in Spanish Fork, how it's intentional that the pride and progress of our city is, is, is poised and, and ready for the next generation to, to have a good job, to, to have a, a living wage and, and be able to do those same things that our ancestors did a hundred years ago in, in some of the biggest companies of the world that, that were here in Spanish Fork, and, and now some of the biggest companies again in the world looking to be in Spanish Fork and, and spend that kind of capital. So, again, twenty twenty-five, I echo what's already been said. Merry Christmas and happy holidays to everyone that lives in Spanish Fork. I'm grateful to, to be able to serve along, alongside these people and, and the staff of Spanish Fork, and twenty twenty-four has certainly been a blessed year. Twenty twenty-five is going to be super exciting as well. So thank you all for your involvement in your city, your love of your city. We've certainly seen that this past year as people caring for each other. So thank you, and, and again, Merry Christmas and happy holidays. Okay, that takes us to staff reports. City Manager Seth Perrins, if you've got some things and some things to assign to some people.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think we've got two items we'd like to do a report on. First, we'll have Corey and, and I think some folks from UDOT, Darren Bunker and others are here to talk about a project on I fifteen, and then after that, we'll do a quick update on some Festival of Light stuff.
Perfect.
We'll invite Darren up. Why don't you come up while I'm talking? Darren Bunker is with UDOT. He's going to present us the feasibility, I'm sorry, the environmental results with the interchange that we're familiar with, they've been looking at near Center Street, and, and we'll let Darren give the details of that. But this is part of the public process. I think the key takeaway for the public is tomorrow night, there is an open house here at the library, five thirty to seven thirty. So if you want to see what we're doing, having some interaction with UDOT and, and stating an opinion, that's a good opportunity as they're wrapping up this environmental process. So Darren, go ahead.
Yeah, so this will just be a, a quick overview of, of the process that we went through in this environmental assessment study. But before I get into that, I, I need to give a personal message to Shane that Jason Davis is very jealous that you live in Spanish Fork and he doesn't.
He should be.
Yeah, yeah, so. All righty. So we started this process probably about a year and a half ago, and when we, when we, the first thing that we did is we came up with a purpose and need. And as I was thinking about it, to make it simple, basically, there's three purposes and needs for this project. One is the regional mobility, and you can think of that as the two interchanges on each end of Spanish Fork, the Main Street Interchange and the eight thousand South Interchange, and what's happening at those interchanges. Currently, those are starting to back up. By twenty fifty, you're going to see large queues onto the freeway if we don't do something. The second purpose and need was for east-west connectivity across I fifteen. Right now, there's not a whole lot of really good access across I fifteen on the, through the I fifteen corridor, and so we want to improve that east-west connectivity, whether it has to do with bikes and pedestrians, or whether it has to do with the multimodal facility, the transit station that is planned in the area as well. And so, and the last one is local mobility, and you can kind of think of that as basically your Main Street corridor, right, and what's happening at each one of the intersections. Main Street currently has probably some of the highest accident rates on, on a road that we know of in the, in the area, and so we are hoping that this project will improve those, that situation as well. Let's see here. This is the effort that we went to. We went through two different screening processes. The first one dealt, deals with the purpose and need that I just explained. We had five different options for locations for the interchanges, and we'll go over what those are in a minute. And we were able to basically screen those down to three through this first level of criteria, meeting the purpose and need of the project. The second level of criteria has to do with the environmental impact, including aquatic resources, four F, that's kind of like your historic houses and things like that, property impacts and costs. Through this process, we did come to the conclusion that an interchange at Center Street was the preferred alternative. You can kind of see in here some of the details of this option. One is that we will be moving the railroad tracks farther to the west to get away from I fifteen. Another one is that we will extend Center Street across I fifteen and connect into sixty-four hundred south. And the other option, the other element of this design is that we would provide a multi-use trail that would kind of go down Center Street where it is today, and then jog down to a hundred and south and go under the bridge, and then go back up to the Center Street roadway. Although pedestrians can get across what we call the single-point urban interchange, th- those are pretty massive inters, interchanges. Sometimes people don't feel comfortable doing that, so we provided this multi-use trail to make people feel comfortable, help them feel comfortable, track traversing I fifteen. When we analyzed this project to accommodate regional mobility, these are the kinds of impacts we saw from this, or can see from this project. As you can see, currently, by twelve, by twenty fifty, if we do not do anything, then we're going to have about four tenths of a mile backup at the eight thousand south interchange. With this project, we'll cut that down to a tenth of a mile. Equivalently, on Main Street, you can see that we're over two miles of backup. That actually backs up all the way onto I fifteen, so you would actually end up with stop traffic on I fifteen. You can imagine that if you got people moving seventy miles an hour and run into stop traffic, that's not a good situation. With this project, we can cut that down to point two miles. So that's how this project will help with regional mobility. East, west.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Just want to make sure I got all of that. And I think the little square in there answered one of the questions.
Can you go back?
The assumption that the Benjamin Interchange was that there's a new interchange there. So e- even if we rebuild that interchange, it would still back up onto I fifteen?
I'm trying to remember if we included the new interchange. I know that the new interchange at the Benjamin exit.
Yes, that's the one I'm talking about.
Is on the step.
I'm assuming you include that in the modeling.
Yeah, I don't know if we did. Do you know if we included that?
Okay, perfect.
So we did assume a spooey.
Okay, so this helps it regardless if we make improvements there. And then the backup, you said on Main Street, on the Main Street Interchange, coming off of I fifteen to Main Street backs up onto the freeway. Is that correct?
Yep.
All right. It's not, we're not talking Main Street itself. We're talking traffic on I fifteen.
On, on I fifteen, two point three miles. So that, that actually takes you all the way to the, pretty close to the four south interchange in Springville. That, that's kind of the distance we're talking about. And by, by implementing this project, we cut that down to two tenths of a mile.
And that's also assuming with the new interchange at forty-eight hundred south is built as well?
Correct, yeah. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Oops, I'm going the wrong way here. Talked about the east-west connectivity. As far as.
While you were on that last slide. Sorry to break your flow. I apologize. I probably should have let you do it all and then.
Okay.
But.
Yeah.
At one time, we were talking about First South not going through I fifteen or across I fifteen. Is that included in the project, or is that dead end at I fifteen?
This, this project assumes that one hundred west will still remain open.
Okay.
That can change in future projects. When the light rail comes in, they may want to close one hundred south, but for, but for our study, we assumed it would, was going to remain open.
Okay. Reviewing your purpose and need statements, one of them is east-west connectivity. It's a pretty critical link for us as a city to maintain that connectivity through I fifteen. So.
Yeah.
It's good to see that it's, that's still there.
Yeah, and so there are other studies happening.
Sure.
Related to SR one sixty-four, SR one fifteen, which is the, the high-load route. We had a question yesterday in our public meeting about that, that route being kept open. We are keeping that open. And so a- as those studies start, start to take form, then one hundred south may be closed, but there should be another option as part of those studies to provide that access that is needed.
But your preferred alternative, your decision would be to leave it open?
Correct. That's our, that's our anticipation.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And so as part of the east-west connectivity, what we do provide is we do provide the new multi-use trail, which provides that connectivity across I fifteen. It, it allows people to feel comfortable getting across that corridor instead of having to go through the spooey. I don't know if you've ever walked through a spooey. You've probably driven through one, but I don't know if you've walked through one. That's not a comfortable feeling to walk through a spooey. So we're, we're happy to be able to provide improved east-west connectivity. As far as local mobility, as I mentioned, these, this really refers to the intersections along Main Street. You can kind of see here, the red bars indicate the situation if we did nothing. And so in all these cases, we're comparing the Center Street alternative to the do-nothing alternative. And you can kind of see here that several of the intersections would, would fail if we did nothing. I think there's six that would fail. By implementing this option and building this preferred alternative, we cut that down to only four intersections that would fail. You can kind of see the travel times up here as well that are reduced. One note, you'll, if you look at Center Street, the, the PMP, the PMP still fails at Center Street. What I want to mention here is this project is not a silver bullet. It's not going to fix everything, but we still, even, even though it's looks like it's not performing any better than, than doing nothing, we're still getting about ten to fifteen percent more traffic through that, through that intersection. So those lines really aren't relative to each other because the, of the volumes that we're pushing through. Let's see, so on to here. So here's a, here's a, a graphic of, of what that looks like. We, we grade intersections based on what we call level of service. You can kind of see what that means from a traffic perspective on the left-hand side. So when you get to a level of service F, the traffic is just not moving at all. And so you can kind of see here that in the twenty fifty PM peak, we still have some failing intersections at four hundred north and center, but the other intersections are improved greatly. And I will say that, you know, we've been coordinating with Spanish Fork City, the city engineering department. They are developing alternative north-south corridors at third east and sixth east, and I believe that those, in conjunction with this project, will start to alleviate the Main Street traffic. The other thing we have going is we have the Main Street Vision Study Project that, that is being designed, and I think the council is aware of, of those efforts to kind of beautify that downtown area. And so I think in combination, all these things will, will present a better situation for the people going through Spanish Fork. I'm not going to go every, over all these numbers. These are the environmental numbers, but what I will say is that these are fairly low numbers for the type of project that we're implementing. There are seventeen acres of agricultural area that we will be impacting, about fifty-four receptors of noise, which is basically a, a residence or a business or something that will be impacted by the increased noise from the project. by the increased noise from the project. A third of an acre of wetlands, that, for this type of project, that's not much at all, right? And so, that's good. Property impacts, we have zero relocations, meaning we're not going to displace anybody from their property as part of this project. We do have seven full acquisitions, however, and 32 partial property impacts. And one of the things I want to mention about tomorrow's meeting is we will have a right-of-way agent there who, and we will have a map of all the parcels that are going to be impacted with the project. And so, when you, when whoever reviews those documents and it looks like your property might be impacted, come to the meeting tomorrow, and we'll have the right-of-way agent talk to you and tell you what that means. Total cost of $180 million. Those are $20, $24. We're seeing probably, I don't know, four, five, six percent inflation per year. So the longer this goes on, it'll, it'll just, that price will go up. This is a slide on the, the areas of the noise impacts. So pretty much you're looking at the west side or the east side of I-15, and then right there along Center Street. There are policies that we, that we adhere to when we go out and when we get into the design. We actually do a noise ballot for the people that are potentially impacted by noise. A certain percentage of those have to say, yes, we do want a wall. Well, a certain percentage have to reply, and then a certain percentage of those have to say, yes, we want mitigation. And so, we'll be going through that process once the design actually kicks off. Just another slide on UDOT's noise abatement policy. Here's the graphic of the property impacts. Those properties that are in the red hatch are the ones that are full acquisitions. The blue hatches are those that are, are partial takes, meaning if the property owner still wants to do something with their property, we'll only take what we need for the project. And then the yellow is a potential full acquisition. You've got, kind of see, that kind of goes through the middle of that large parcel. We'll, we'll work with the property owner when we get to that stage and determine what they want to do. So this is the process we went through. We started meeting with you guys, like I said, about a year and a half ago when we went into the scoping phase. We came back to you when we, when we determined what alternatives we were going to look at, and today we're presenting what our preferred alternative is. The decision, we'll publish the formal decision probably about the middle of February, middle of March timeframe is when the formal decision will be made. Public comment period started, has already started, and we're expecting all those comments back by January 3rd. And this is how everybody can participate with the project, including the meeting tomorrow, as was mentioned, at 5:30. The comments are really important. One thing we want to point out is the comments aren't necessarily a vote, like we're going to do this, or going to do that, but, but we're hoping that people have comments like, oh, did you consider this particular impact of the wetlands that are on my property? We had a gentleman yesterday at our public meeting talk about that. In, in his case, it wasn't our project that was going to be impacting his wetlands, it's the UTA project that will be impacting his wetlands. And so, he was grateful that we pointed him in that direction. But please provide as many comments as you can, and we'll, we'll look at those and make sure that we've made the right decision. Okay? And we've talked about the open house, which will be tomorrow over in the Heritage Room, and so we look forward to seeing you there. Have any questions for me? By the way, thank you for allowing us to come and visit with you at each one of these stages. Your staff has been great to work with. Love working with Spanish Fork City, so appreciate it.
Darren, a question about the hearing tomorrow. I think Corey mentioned it was a public meeting. It's, it's actually a formal hearing where residents, citizens, whomever can come and give formal comments on the record that the team will then address at a future release. Is that how that works?
That, that's correct. We'll actually have a court recorder there.
Okay.
Who will be taking comments, and, and so.
So they can take them?
It'll be part of the formal record.
Perfect. What do you do with those comments once they are given to you?
We'll look at them and, and kind of categorize them and evaluate them. You know, sometimes we'll get just kind of miscellaneous comments, and there's not a whole lot you can do with those, but sometimes somebody will, will bring up a good point, and if, if it's something that we need to address, then we'll reach out to them and...
So you review each one of them. Will you provide comments or answers to every one of those?
We're, we're not going to provide an answer to every comment, to every person that, that provides one, I don't think, right?
We will.
Oh, we will.
Not necessarily back to the question, but...
Back to the individual.
In the decision document.
Oh, in the decision document.
So someone makes a comment, you're, don't, you won't get responded to personally, but that, that response will be in the com, in the document later on.
Correct.
All right. Perfect. I think it's, it's good for those that take the time to go there to understand what their comment does, what you're going to do with that comment, so I appreciate you answering those questions.
The formal setting like this, will you have your team up?
Tomorrow will be an open house, so we won't have the presentation like this. That occurred last night.
Okay.
That was recorded. That recording will be available on our, on our project site. And, and so tomorrow, it's just kind of an open house. There'll be a lot of staff there to answer questions, and, and, you know, like I mentioned earlier, particularly the right-of-way agent will be there.
So don't be scared. It's not a scary thing like this.
It's not a scary thing, no. And I, I will mention also, this project, the construction of the project is not funded, and so we don't have a timeline for actual design and construction at this point.
Any other questions for Darren from UDOT?
Thank you again.
Thanks, Darren.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Back to Corey. Corey, any additional comments on this section of the staff report?
No, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Parrish?
No, that's it. And Dale, anything you want to update on Festival of Lights and the changes we've had, experience there?
Yeah, let me, I wanted to give you an update on the Festival of Lights. As you can imagine, and we've made some changes here implementing an advanced ticketing system, and as you can imagine, anytime you try to make public habit changes that they've been used to for over 30 years, there's going to be some challenges associated with that. So let me just kind of give you an update. From our opinion, first of all, this is, this is very successful. It has some hitches and some glitches and some challenges and, and some frustrations, but we're responding to those as we move along. We had, we pre-sold about 300 tickets on Thanksgiving night. So our whole purpose for this, obviously, and if you've been involved in Festival of Lights for very long, you know, we've had years where we've been backed up to the fire station up on Canyon Road is where the line has been. So we're implementing this not to frustrate people, but to have them hopefully have an opportunity to, to expedite this process quicker so that they're not having to wait in line for two hours to get in to see the Festival of Lights. We're tracking the data so that we can make changes as necessary, but each, each time slot is like a half-hour window. So 6 o'clock is our most popular hour right now, based on the data. 7 o'clock's our second most popular hour, and 6:30 is third. So as we track this data, it helps us know kind of what to plan for. The challenge we're having is that about a fifth of these customers aren't coming with tickets. They're just going to the box office, they're paying the price we're asking at the box office. So that's one challenge that we've encountered. We haven't had any nights sold out yet, but that's going to happen. Our busiest nights are this weekend, this coming weekend and the next weekend, and Monday night, they're going to be really busy and we're going to have some sold-out nights. And, and so to accommodate those people who have pre-bought tickets, we're going to have to start turning some people away at the, at the box office so that we can make sure those people get in. One of the challenges we're having, there was some misunderstood or misconceptions, and you may have, may or may not have seen them on social media, but if they had a pass, they thought they had a lightning pass at Disneyland, so we could just go right to the front of the line and get in. And apologize for whatever, how, however that misconception came about, but that's not how this process works. So we had some people butting in line and making people frustrated and angry that other people are butting in line thinking they have this special lightning pass. The pass is, is made for you to come in in this window of time, so that you come in, get in line like everybody else during this time, and you'll get, you'll get through the Festival of Lights within your time slot, assuming that everybody's cooperating, right? But we, like I said, we do have a bunch of people just out of habit are still coming. They haven't purchased, they haven't pre-purchased a ticket, so they just go right to the box office and pay. So that's, that's bogging things down a little bit. Our largest night so far this year was last Saturday, December 7th. We had 784 cars. Now, that doesn't mean anything to you unless you're out working this stuff and you know what number is going to back you clear up to Canyon Road. That night, we never went up to 3400 East, so we never got off of River Bottoms Road with 784 cars. That, that's, that's miraculous, actually. It's telling us that our system's working, that we're getting people through in a timely fashion. We're expecting to have thousand-car nights coming up, so it's going to get tested. One of the things that we want to make sure people understand, and let me, let me just read this to you real quick, because my staff sent this out today, and this will be sent out to everybody from here on out. "We're excited to see you tonight, Tuesday, December 10th, at the 32nd Annual Festival of Lights. Here's some helpful hint, some helpful reminders, and this will tell you the challenges we've had. Plan to arrive in line at the advanced ticketing time you selected. Wait time to enter the park is an average of 15 minutes. There is one line for all vehicles. Please don't cut in line. Your receipt is not your ticket." So you can't just take the ticket. It has to have the QR code on it. It has a QR code, and we need to, you need to have the ticket or the QR code ready to scan upon the entrance into the park. And enlarge that QR code and hold your phone up right out the window, at, out your window at the booth. So they're trying to give some instructions on some feedback we've had from people, what's, what's holding things up. But as a whole, the, the system's working really well, and, and it'll just get better and better as people get accustomed to the process. I don't know if you guys have any questions. That's just kind of a brief. Again, as we've had challenges come up, we've addressed those individually, and if it's something we need to tweak on our end, we do that. We have people, people there monitoring traffic. We have people there walking up and down the lines, making sure people have a ticket ahead of time so they don't wait for an hour and then be frustrated because they don't have their ticket. So we're trying to disseminate that information as, as, as good as we can so that people aren't frustrated waiting in line. What are your questions, or what have you guys, what have you guys seen?
I was in the Parks and Rec Office yesterday, and these guys were meeting about Festival of Lights, and just to add to all of that, they said one of the biggest problems are people get to the, to the booth to scan their QR code and then sit and ask all these questions. And they said that's actually bogging up things more than anything else, is just sitting there asking so many questions about what's going on.
Yeah.
Keep your questions for...
Get them answered somewhere else.
What questions are they asking?
Besides in line.
Like what's the new feature tonight?
I think, I think all of these things, and I think that's why they decided to send this out, so hopefully it's answering their questions before they arrive.
Remember, you can always text in your questions, right?
Ooh, where at, Jesse?
Someone else can respond to you at a normal time.
Yeah, and that's part of the message as well, is we said if you have questions, call during business hours or text rather than at the booth.
Perfect.
I mean, I don't know that we shouldn't be surprised that there are a bunch of questions. This is significantly different, right? The goal is to stagger the arrivals so that we can get them through, so everyone just doesn't show up at 6 o'clock, and I think that sounds like it's working. It's a logistical challenge to try to implement something, something like this in the dark of night and cold weather, first year. I like the attempt. I think that once we're done with this year, we need to sit down and really walk through the pros and cons, and what did we get, and I, I don't, I think that we needed to try something, don't get me wrong, and this is probably the right thing, and it more than likely gets better every single year. But it's, it's a, it's a challenge for us as a city to implement, and it's a, it's super frustrating to sit there for 30 minutes and say, sorry. But, but we're going to get to that point, right? Because it's, it's that busy and it's that important, but it's, it's, I like the attempt. I think that we, and I'm sure this is happening out on the ground, city staff is pretty caring about the responses they're giving the folks, because it is, it is, like, you plan all this, it's sort of spontaneous at times, right? Oh, I have some time, let's go see the Festival of Lights, and, and it's less spontaneous now. It needs to be, and we're to the point where it has to be, so. I think just let's be, use a, a whole bunch of caution with the conversations that we have, and don't assume that we have gotten the word out to every single person, because it's just impossible for that to happen.
Yeah, that's been kind of a guide for us. It's been momentarily rough, you know, some conversations, there are some people that will take it out on, on our staff just because, and, but those have been the minority, right, Dale? They've been, there have been some.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, but they, they are really doing what they can to educate. We're not waiting, though, until the end. These guys have been, every week, they've been dissecting the data, they've been tweaking what they've been doing, and, and from, I, I guess I'd say maybe, you know, tonight, December 12th, or December 10th versus Thanksgiving night, we're probably, you know, 50% better efficiency, efficiency-wise, and that's important because we haven't had anything really hard yet, and we know that's coming. It's going to be, there's going to be a bad night, you know, and, for all the reasons that you've outlined, and, but we've gotten a lot better with everything that we've done so far. I'm really pleased with where they're headed. Broncos, Bronco and Emily and Janice have been probably some of the main ones on the rec side. SF City Ticks have done, folks have done a lot, too.
Yeah, and they meet, they meet every Monday morning.
Every Monday morning.
And do a debrief.
Yep.
So, so those changes are being made. I guess we're asking for, this is a huge change.
Just be patient.
If you'll be patient with us, we are making changes on the fly.
It's, it's sort of ironic that you're going there to be, to have some joy and see some lights, and you get upset if you can't get into it immediately. So have some patience, you're going to see some lights.
Merry Christmas.
Dale, two questions. One is, do we know what the percentage of no-shows, like someone who makes an appointment and doesn't show up? And then if that happens to me, so I make an appointment, something happens, life happens, and I can't make it, what are we doing to, to write that, or how can they reschedule?
Yeah, if they'll just get ahold of our, of our rec office, we can make those adjustments. Again, these are all, these are all tweaks, and, and we've got a dozen more of those types of scenarios of what do I do, what if? We're trying to, we're trying to make this as painless as possible of a transition, and we have a lot of people that come from all over the state to come to this. So Shane's right, it's not easy to reach everybody and let everybody know that this is our process, which is why we're allowing people to come in and pay at the gate still. We're, we're, we don't want to punish those people that are following our process, because eventually we want to transition everybody into that. And, and at some point, we're going to have to draw a hard line, and it's coming up shortly. Because if we've sold all those tickets and we don't have any more room, we don't want to make you, we don't want to make those people wait in line longer than they need to, because we're accommodating all the people that chose not to buy tickets ahead of time. So it, it's going to be a little bit of a challenge, but it's working well. It's, it's got some frustrations associated with this, with it, as does any change that's this major, but, but, but we're working through it, and it's, it's, it's working.
This data has been really enlightening, and it'll give us the opportunity, you know, one of the things to talk about will be prices, different prices at different times, you know, the, if I want to shave off that curve, I'm going to entice you to come maybe at the 9 o'clock hour, and, and I don't want to go at 9, but if I do, maybe that's cheaper, right? And some different things, all of that'll come, you know, in the off-season, but the data's been excellent for our people as they're, as they're studying it, and they've got all sorts of ideas for, for next year already.
Yeah, that's really, and I don't know that I answered your question, Councilman Cardon, but we, we do have all of this data that we are studying, and then that makes this ticket, ticketing system very helpful for us, because we can look at the trends, we can see if we've got people that, how many people actually came through with tickets, and how many were box office tickets, and, and who didn't come, and we can, we can look at those trends and then act accordingly.
Perfect.
Any other questions?
We're pretty close to tubing. That adds another element. We have people coming up.
We are. They've, they started making snow today, so they're a little bit behind time. I don't know why yet. I haven't, I haven't, I haven't visited with, with that group, but they have started... I haven't, I haven't, I haven't visited with, with that group, but they have started making snow. So they're for sure going to, many to be open by Christmas. That's what they're shooting for.
In a couple of weeks, everybody that's in line, just be aware of the person that you may think is cutting in line.
Budding in line.
Might be, might be going tubing. And so let's keep the holiday cheer.
Yeah, good point.
Do all fingers waving, not just one finger.
Yes, thank you for that reminder.
Questions for Dale?
Nope.
Staff on that. Okay, thank you Dale, appreciate that. Mr. Parents, anything else from staff? Good. Perfect, thank you for that detail. And again, reminder of tomorrow night, the, the meeting just right over here next door for public comment about the, the Center Streets and I-15 interchange. Please join that if so inclined. Item number seven, consent items. We do have two items on the consent agenda that require a roll call vote. So I will entertain a motion for consent items if no one on the council has questions about the consent items.
I move to approve the consent items.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon. Seconded by Councilwoman Beck in a roll call vote here. Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck. And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Consent items are approved, takes us to eight on the agenda. So public hearing item section of our agenda, you can see we have A through G of the public hearing. We'll go through these like we always do with presentation of the item and then ask any questions that we need to before bringing the public up and ask questions after the public hearing. David G. Anderson, ordinance for the Miller zone change.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Like you mentioned, this is item 8A. Item 9A is connected to it. It's kind of part B with the actual proposed preliminary plat that's tied to the proposed zone change here. Subject property in this case is located on the south side of 400 North, not far from the intersection of 400 North and Spanish Fork Parkway. Just a little bit to the west on the south side there, 400 North. Five acre site. The subject property currently is zoned exclusive agriculture. And where development has happened in this part of the community, properties have been zoned R-112. R-112 zone's consistent with the general plan, low density residential, which frankly, from a, from a zone change perspective, makes it pretty easy for us as staff. We use the general plan and surrounding zoning as guides relative to what we would recommend to find this proposal consistent with what we had hoped. And it is recommended that the proposed zone change to R-112 be approved. There's another part of this which involves using the master plan development overlay, which opens up the door for a little bit more flexible subdivision design than what somebody could do with what we'd call a standard subdivision in a zone like this one, the R-112 zone. Where typically with a standard subdivision, not typically with a standard subdivision, there would be a minimum lot size that would have to be adhered to. I mean, no allowed deviation from that at 12,000 square feet. Whereas with the master plan development, applicant can rather propose a project that simply has an average lot size of 12,000 square feet, which in this case, the average lot size, 12,074 square feet. So pretty close to, to that minimum that they need to meet to qualify for approval as a master plan development. The smallest lot is 10,484 square feet. And in this particular case, utilizing the master plan development has made it so that the applicant can provide for the proposed street connection here to properties to the east that certainly have development potential and that we would want to have tie into the local street network so that people get to and from development there without needing, needing to enter either 400 North or Spanish Fork Parkway to busy streets today. They're only going to get busier. Traffic conflict's going to become more of a problem in the future and keeping as much traffic, local neighborhood traffic on local streets, we believe is a good thing. So looking at the project from this perspective, and again, it meets the criteria to be approved as a master plan development, given the lot size and some other things about the development. The zoning, I think, is frankly what we'd expect. Likely we would not recommend that anything other than that be approved at this location. There are some tricks however, relative to this property, its elevation, particularly its elevation when it's developed. If you happen to have been in the neighborhood to the south and have been on some of the streets there, you'll notice that when that project was constructed, quite a bit of fill material was brought in. And the homes are on lots that are actually elevated a considerable amount above the properties that are, are on Spanish Fork Parkway here. That's a matter of being able to tie into our utility that relies on gravity sewer and to make things work. As I understand it, the sewer in this particular area is quite shallow. This property likewise, we anticipate would be raised. And that does create some challenges that we've discussed with neighboring property owners about how their properties could potentially be developed and how they may or may not be able to tie into this project and the sewer lines that will be constructed here.
Dave, can I pause you right there while you're on it? So one of the, the questions that was brought up by a resident in the planning commission was about them being kind of in a pit, right? Around this development and another adjacent development. So what is a, I want to say protection, but that's probably the right word for them that they're not going to just get flooded out? Because this, if you look at this property, they've already brought in a lot of dirt. They've, they're preparing quite a bit. And you can see that it's a lot higher than that property owner's property. And I would be concerned. So what, what rights do they have? Like what does that look like or what are they doing or is this property going to do to mitigate that risk?
Yeah, probably look for a little bit of help to answer that. I'll, I'll, I'll try. The owner of this property doesn't have any right to allow for any more storm water or drainage water to flow onto neighboring properties than what they historically have had. So if they bring in fill, they also need to figure out how to, how to manage that storm water and maybe on. So relative to the idea of, of an increased risk of flooding occurring with the change of elevation of this property, one way or another, that needs to be addressed by this property owner as they develop. Seen that done in a few different ways over the years. I don't know what they're contemplating or proposing. Sometimes it's a swale on the property line to intercept water before it goes onto a neighboring property or something like that. I mean, I don't know Cory, if maybe you have any, any insight as to what specifically has, has been considered here?
I don't know what specifically has been. I've seen developments like this do a daylight type basement or backyard where the front yard is up at the road. But the backyard could be a daylight or walkout type scenario. So you typically see that on hillsides, but it works well in a situation like this to help control drainage. I think there's options. I believe when we finalize a, a building inspection, building permit, those are some of the things that our building inspectors look at to make sure those requirements of drainage and keeping that on our own lots is, is billed at least at the time that they sign off on the occupancy.
Does that help?
Kind of, I may have more questions.
Okay. I think honestly sewer is the toughest nut to crack and I don't know that there is, is a good answer. We've talked about, and we've only talked about it at a very high level frankly, but you know, the concept of maybe instead of development that might occur, it's kind of a square shaped group of properties right in the corner of Spanish Fork Parkway and 400 North, being able to take their sewer in a different direction. You know, when eventually they, they do want to change the use of those properties, which incidentally is something we try to look out for. We don't want to, to have a development happen in such a way that it limits the future potential of other properties to be at least used in a, excuse me, a similar fashion. One of the thing I'll note, just maybe get it out for the conversation is that in the planning commission meeting, we also discussed the idea because a development like this likely will interrupt the location of irrigation ditches and that type of a thing. The prospect of the properties we're talking about here, the ones to the east, maybe being able to utilize our pressurized irrigation system for agricultural, you know, water. And that is something we've done in the past, something that we've talked with, with Cory and Mr. Pierce about that prospect. That's something certainly that we think makes sense to explore should this project be approved tonight and have them move forward to the next step.
I would just, Dave, just quickly, just echo what Councilman Cardon said. I've, I've watched this property develop and the landfill brought in and it just sits so high and I've wondered what the plan is. And so it's, it's interesting to start talking about it now with the conversation. But I don't know, personally, I would be concerned about the surrounding areas as they develop and however, whatever town form that looks like. But just when it comes to these questions of, you know, runoff and sewer and I don't know, I don't understand it as well as many in this room, I'm sure. But I, it seems a little concerning from what I do know. So something to, I think, take a good look at.
It, it might be helpful to look at the subdivision that's, that is existing today just to the south of this one, right? That, I think we call it, called it the Mayfield subdivision. It was built roughly 10ish years ago, immediately north of Maple Mountain High School. Those homes in, in association to the homes that still exist on, on Spanish Fork Parkway to the north of it, they're high. And they're high because of the sewer, is simply what it is. The sewer elevations that are required to make sewer flow are, require them to be, the roads and the lines to be where they are. That happens in fields and, and it's not an uncommon thing to see. So that, when that Mayfield subdivision went in, I think what I'm trying to say is when that went in 10 years ago, the exact same thing happened. It was flush with the land, it was probably flush with the road at the elevation by Maple Mountain High School. But the topography of the land going north dipped down and it needed to go up in order to make the sewer work. And so that's why, that's why that fill came in and it looked, it looked stark then. It doesn't look quite as stark today because those elevations got tapered down and, you know, the backyards and things is, as they went to the, the properties that, the farms that existed there. I'm speaking kind of generally here, but that happens, it has happened and, and there are a handful of other locations. I think, I think the, the project just down Spanish Fork Parkway, if I recall, Councilman Cardon, maybe in, in an area close to you. I feel like a lot of those got pretty high out of the ground for the same exact reasons.
You got sub pumps and different things.
Yeah, different things like that.
Take care of that.
Dave, is there a canal that runs through the south of that property?
There's a ditch, yes.
Is it used as irrigation for the neighboring properties?
Yes, yes, that's my understanding. So that is precisely why we talk about.
That would be piped if developed so that it wouldn't cause any cutoffs to neighboring properties?
Yeah, as I understand it, the property owner would have the obligation either to pipe it so it could continue to deliver water as it has historically. Or we have worked with folks to instead abandon basically the ditch and connect to our pressurized irrigation system. Sometimes that, that is a significant benefit to the folks that have access then to pressurized irrigation. And there's a benefit for the developer that doesn't have to install a pipe that potentially is only going to be used for a short period of time. You know, before the neighboring properties develop and that is abandoned, so.
Do you know, does it run east-west or west-east?
I do not know.
It, it runs from the west to the east. There's a, if you're looking at the area, you can see a kind of north-south ditch that's landed. That's the main supply ditch, if you will.
So we're talking about offering or possibly getting the properties to the east then on?
That would be the developer, right?
Yeah, and where we're at right now with a level of design is, it's called preliminary. You know, so it's, it's more than just kind of a pie in the sky idea. Engineers have identified certainly some critical things about the potential of being able to develop the site. Our staff's reviewed that and we're recommending that it be approved. But nobody's taken a really hard look at designing the pressurized irrigation system, for example, and water lines. It's easy enough to understand the sewer depth and that sort of a thing to get a feel for what needs to happen with the grade hints. You know, before even anything was submitted to the city, I believe they were bringing in fill dirt because they had some sense as to, you know, what the elevation of the sewer lines were and that type of a thing. And I say that just to mention that the next step that we go to, that's really when we would get into the details of what makes the most sense. A way of continuing to serve a property via, you know, a piped ditch or tying into pressurized irrigation. And I don't think that necessarily, at least historically, that hasn't been a unilateral decision. You know, that would require some cooperation from the neighbors. They likely would have to dedicate some water rights. So there's water for us to deliver via our pressurized irrigation system and that type of a thing. And frankly, I think short of it being good for everybody, it probably doesn't happen. Probably just default to what the city's requirements are and, and move that way. But does that help at all? By the way, there's still certainly is work that we need to be done to, to figure all of that out.
I think directly south of this property, bordering 100 South, that large acreage owned by the L E S Church, probably one of the largest pressurized irrigation served farms.
Oh, is it?
On the east side now. Yeah, there's not, they did away with the ditches and now sprinkle it with P I.
Gotcha. Yeah. Yep, a handful. It's been really beneficial. You don't have to take your water at 2:38 in the morning on a Thursday night and whatever.
Turn on the hose.
How would you know? But anyway. Why, why is this a zone change?
Right now the zoning's AE.
Okay.
Exclusive agriculture, so.
So to put residential units on it, it has to have a zone change no matter if it was R-113 or whatever it might be, or R-14?
If you have 40 acres, you can have a house in the current zone. So there's a change to allow the development of this size. And then there are two parts, the, the change to R-112 gets us there relative to the density basically we're talking about. And the overlay gets us the flexibility to basically use the average lot size.
Okay, all right. I think it's important that, and it may have to be something we talk about every time we approve something like this, the process that this goes through, right? If a zone change, which is the legislative part, we're going to, at some point later on, potentially look at a preliminary plat. We're doing it at the same time, but they are two separate approvals.
They are distinct, yep.
And in that preliminary plat, it is just that, it's very preliminary. It's mostly two dimensional. Can this fit from a straight down view perspective? And then there's a bunch of engineering and design that has to go into it before some of these questions can really be answered. So I don't, I think it's important that, not necessarily trying to evade any of the questions, but it's a matter of pushing those questions to their appropriate part, which is the final plat approval. Because we just don't know some of those answers. However, it's extremely important for if anyone in this area, or anyone in the city has a, has a concern about any of those engineering design questions, that they bring them up today and put us on notice that there is a concern so that Cory's group can make sure that those are addressed in the final plat.
That's what I was going to just say when you were saying that is that like, I agree, like there's the, the process and it has to run its course, right? Engineering has to take a hard look at a lot of these different things and Cory's team and the building inspectors, inspectors. But this is the, I don't want to say the one crack that we have at it, but we won't see it again.
True.
So we need to make sure that those things are on notice, at least from our part, because that's, that is our role, right?
I agree with you. Put staff on notice, we have concerns with this, this and this engineering wise.
Yep.
And make sure that they solve it.
For sure.
Most of the time, those are going to be covered within our code, right?
Correct.
But it is important for us and the public to bring those issues up now so they get addressed.
Correct.
But yeah, I'll just stop there.
I'd like to follow up on that because this project has been unique in that we met with neighboring property owners months ago. And I think it was probably the filter, as that was being brought in, it was kind of a, hey, something's going on there for neighbors. And I don't necessarily want to mention them by name, but Bazgards or Mr. Sumption, I don't see here tonight. We met with Mr. Sumption, one of the neighbors in her office a few months ago. Came to the DRC meeting, had a really healthy conversation primarily about the sewers and the planning commission meeting likewise. That only makes our review better to get that type of input. I understand why it's typically this forum or the planning commission meeting. That's when people usually get, get the signal that something's going on when we send a letter or put a sign on a property or that type of a thing. But we've had some great conversations with neighbors that we typically don't have on this project.
Good. Any more questions for Dave before we go to public hearing on this item?
Any more questions for Dave before we go to public hearing on this item? Thank you, Dave. The applicant, before we go into public hearings, the applicant here, would you like to speak before public hearing? We might ask you questions after public hearing, but come up and state your name to Tara so we get you on the record.
My name is Brandon Dennison. I appreciate your, your questions. I can briefly just answer a couple of your, your questions as far as the drainage, which is obviously always a, a big issue, especially when we're raising up a site. Like Dave said, our property is not allowed to create any excess drainage to the surrounding properties and one of the solutions we proposed preliminarily is a system called storm bricks, which are essentially either, or devices that are placed underneath the, the soil that help absorb that drain, that drainage and stormwater. So that is what has been proposed here preliminarily in our preliminary designs, but of course, our engineers will, will get into that with the city to make sure that no excess drainage is, is put onto any of the neighboring properties because of course, we don't want to do anything like that. As far as the, the ditches, the irrigation ditches, we have, the ditch, the ditch that I believe you're referring to is actually just slightly off our property, but we have been in coordination with the ditch company or the irrigation company to make sure we're not creating any sort of issue there or that we are doing what we need in piping or otherwise. So, but like Dave said, this, this is a great development here that lines great with the master plan of Spanish Fork City and I'm happy to answer any questions, of course, as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. I'd entertain a motion to go to public hearing for item eight A.
Move that we go on to public hearing?
Motion made by Councilman Euler.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Cardon. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for eight A. If anybody would like to come up and speak to this item, please state your name and ask your questions. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Euler. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Discussion back up here on eight A. Any additional questions for the applicant or staff on this?
Vaughn, I guess I've just got a quick question legally. They've been told and anytime a property develops, they're required or they're supposed to keep the water on their property. What happens if, for whatever reason, they don't? Legally, what are the options that the adjacent property owners have?
The adjacent property owners would have a cause of action for trespass, for allowing their water to migrate onto their property above and beyond the natural flow that would have occurred otherwise, so it's a civil action, private civil action.
So if a property owner, if somebody develops the property and sells the home and then a new homeowner, homeowner comes in and buys that home, are they then the ones liable? Or say the developers sold all the homes and moved on and it becomes an issue later on, how does that work?
No, I, I think it would be with the developer, the person that caused the, the condition.
Okay. So homeowners wouldn't have to worry in any way or shouldn't have to worry in any way?
Well, I wouldn't go that far.
They put their sprinkler on the end and, and don't fix a broken sprinkler, you'll find, yeah.
There'll be a big fat engineering stamp on there that says, signed off by professional engineer. That person will also be liable.
Could be, could be responsible as well.
Responsible, I should say.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant?
Just to be clear, that's why they don't let me stamp anything?
Took away your stamp a long time ago. Okay, if there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion for item eight A.
I move to approve the proposed Miller Zone change based on the following findings. First, the Spanish Fork City is prepared to provide services that the proposed zone change would require. Number two, that the proposal is consistent with the city's general planned land use, low-density residential designation. And number three, that this proposal is designed with local streets that are discontinuous but well-connected, creating a pattern to discourage through traffic. You can see Spanish Fork City general plan land use policy A dot three dot two.
Motion made by Councilman Took. Seconded by Councilwoman Beck. This is a roll call vote here. Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yeah.
Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Item eight A is approved. Thank you for that discussion, appreciate the good questions. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, applicant. Takes us to B on the public hearing agenda, the Roots Coffee Zone Change Ordinance.
Again, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Subject property in this case is what I will probably still know as the America First Credit Union building across the street from us, just on the other side of the old city office building, I'll at least know it as that until something like this ends up happening there. So on the corner of First West and Center Street, on the northeast corner there, relatively small site and currently zoned commercial office. The proposal is to change the zoning of this site to commercial two with the development enhancement overlay, as is the case with a lot of sites like this that we've looked at over the years, where there have been, as in this case, multiple different historic uses of the existing building and the site. Somebody's trying to come up with a way to maybe adapt a building to a new use, to repurpose the property and that type of a thing. The zoning criteria that have been developed, adopted over the years by Spanish Fork, that primarily contemplate what we call greenfield development, if somebody going on to a vacant property where, you know, you can, to some degree, configure the property boundaries and the size and determine where access occurs for the property, those things just don't work and that's where the development enhancement overlay comes into play as part of the zone change. Right now, just structure, as we can see here on the subject property, the proposal would allow for the building to be adapted for use as a coffee shop. In a nutshell, by way of its location, I'll just speak for myself, I think that potentially is an outstanding use of the subject property. It's a prominent location. In my view, the idea of this property being, being put back into service sooner than later is a really good thing. I, I will say that I've kind of caught the vision that I think that the, the, both the property owner and the folks that want to operate the coffee shop there have for the, the property's potential. There are some concerns that we've expressed to staff and that we've worked with the applicants to address. Primarily, it's been access and there would be some notable changes made to how the property is accessed right now. And I will say it's, it's maybe as bad as it could be from a traffic circulation standpoint on, onsite and how people get to and from the site. There is a really, really large drive aisle here, just open, which leads to what's kind of a goofy parking configuration there on the property, what's existed for a while. Similar kind of situation exists over on First West. As proposed, the points of access and egress from the property would be restricted and more clearly identified. There would be one point of ingress from Center Street on the eastern boundary of the property. In order to make that work, a fence that exists right now on the eastern side of the site would be moved some distance, ten or so feet further onto what now is a body shop site to the east. That happens to be an important aspect of the design because there's a really, really large power pole right here. The power pole could be moved, it'd be expensive. So being able to relocate the driveway a little bit further to the east, I think by way of even just happenstance, it's a great thing that that opportunity exists. Traffic flow is somewhat identified with the arrows that you see on this plan. The development enhancement overlay becomes important primarily because, and we would call this a restaurant with a drive-through, and our parking requirement for restaurants is high, where a lot of parking for restaurants. Now, in this case, this particular site has close proximity to a whole lot of on-street parking configured in different ways. We have some angled parking, we have parallel parking, and as I understand it, a pretty significant volume of their, their customer traffic is via the drive-through. So with that in mind, personally, I believe the parking that they can provide, even though it doesn't meet what we typically would require for a restaurant, can work just fine. And that indeed is part of the proposal to approve the, excuse me, the development enhancement overlay for the subject property so it can be approved and so that we ultimately can issue a business license for the coffee shop, even though the site doesn't meet our minimum parking requirement. Likely, it also doesn't quite meet our, our landscape requirement. It's a little bit hard to identify with the information that we have, and that's also been something that customarily has been considered as the council's looked at other properties and we've tried to make something work and we've used the development enhancement overlay to make something work. So to summarize briefly, it's been reviewed by the Development Review Committee, we've had a few conversations with that body about the proposal, basically what the applicants are, are providing with this image is what we suggested that they, they consider by way of how to lay things out. This was reviewed by the planning commission as well last week, they recommended that it be approved and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
How many parking spots would they be required? Because they have ten now, right? So what would they be required?
Ten spaces per thousand square feet. Hell, or just the building again, can you remind? Eleven hundred? Yeah, so they'd have to have, let's just say twelve, it's rounded up.
So they're not far off?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a huge deviation.
So then, second question I have is if we're approving the enhancement overlay, but we don't have the landscaping, because we aren't doing a landscaping plan or anything like that right now, are we just giving a blanket approval of the enhancement overlay or how will that be rendered?
Yeah, that's a great question. We've talked a little bit about that. We would expect the applicants to provide a more detailed landscaping plan with their building permit. Certainly, I mean, if the council would like to see anything with more detail sooner than that, that could be part of the approval. You may want to wait to take action on it until you see more detail. It, it's been customary to see with development enhancement overlay proposals, some pretty detailed plans identifying, we call it a plant schedule, you know, the, the number and sizes of different plants that'll be on the site, where they'll be placed and that type of a thing.
Any other questions for Dave?
So, when we approve, when? That's a bad way of saying that. If this gets approved and it doesn't meet a parking requirement, do we need a finding that says it doesn't meet a parking requirement? Is it a, does it make it sort of a condition of use? Like if, if we have a parking problem in the future, we have some ability to, to change something?
I'm going to say yes, but no to the second part of that.
Okay.
And I, I believe that, and it's a legislative act, so if you were to approve a zone change implementing the development enhancement overlay, or as we discussed with the previous project, master plan development overlay, an intrinsic part of that approval is this layout. So neither this applicant or nobody in the future could deviate from this plan without having a future council approve that change. So it would cut both ways. We would also be stuck with it by way of, I don't think if there is a parking problem, you could undo this action.
Okay.
And yes, I think inherently we, we would be in essence saying, this is the number of parking spaces, this is where.
Right, the requirement now is this.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, okay.
Dave, I got a question with Center Street, currently with it being city street, there's on-street parking, they'd be able to park there. If that were ever to go to UDOT, let's say UDOT, Center Street became so busy that they say, okay, can they come into a city and say, we're removing on-street parking of our streets? And how, how would that work or how would that then affect our, if we're using on-street parking? Or do we use on-street parking to calculate the number of parking that they're allowed?
Yeah, we don't count on-street parking towards the requirement.
So that wouldn't affect this in any way?
And I think UDOT does have, as state of Utah, the right to place whatever restrictions they want to on the use of, of rights of way that they own and operate. Have a few experts in the room.
Similar process to what we would follow. In a large part, we would just do it. If the, if the road demand requires, the width of that right-of-way is there for all purposes associated with travel. And if it needs to go from curb to curb, for example, Eleventh East, 1150 East was one of those a year or two ago, right? We went curb to curb because we had to, communicated with the residents, but it was a, this is what we're going to have to do kind of a thing. They could certainly do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Dave? Thank you, Dave.
I think though, if, with one thought, and Cory, this is maybe unique to this area, if we were to give Center Street to UDOT in some kind of a trade, which, you know, has been talked about for years, the possibility of it, I don't know that the angled parking would go with that right-of-way. I, I don't know that, but it, I'm not sure that the angled parking is necessarily totally inside of what that right-of-way might be. I'm shooting from the hip on that. I'm thinking, you know, about the rights of way that go up and down that street. We might have gone a little further to the north or south with that angled parking to accommodate it in that way. So we might hold back some of that. It's not really an answer that we need to dig into.
Yeah, no, I was just curious.
There's some, you've got some power poles and things that would prevent you from doing anything parking in front of it and getting into the, into the planner strip there, I guess in front, huh?
Yeah, and this one on the corner, you're going to have limited parking ability anyway on the street, right? Just simply because of the proximity to First, First West. But I, I think as we've surveyed the, this type of use, parking really isn't the heavy, surely not the heavy use.
It's having enough of a queue to be able to drive through and not be backed up on a street, right?
That right in is certainly a benefit.
Yep.
That was the question I had for if the applicant's here is what their other locations look like from a queuing standpoint?
Yeah, and this one, the nice one here is that it wraps around that building, right? So you've got, you've got all sides of that that you can go, I don't know that it'll have quite as long a line as In-N-Out, but it's kind of a similar, similar length.
Hoping.
Similar length, right?
Is the applicant here would like to speak before we go into public hearing?
Hello, my name is Gina Lynn Soto. It's nice to officially meet our council members. Any questions that you have for me, I'm, I'm open to answer them.
I do have one for you. So you're, you'll be leasing the property, you're not purchasing the property, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Is it you or is it the property owner that's going to be putting the money into the, the enhancements?
It'll be both.
Both?
Yeah, as it typically, yes.
Okay.
Do you, I know you have a couple other locations, I believe, in Salt Lake.
That's correct.
What is your, do you have a drive-through and what does that queuing normally look like? How many cars, like at a, at the very busiest time? You are right next to a high school, so I assume there will be some busy times.
Right, that's a good question. Our locations up in Salt Lake are not a drive-through, either of them are, but we are located in very, very busy streets. Downtown off 300 West is one of the busiest. And then our Sugar House location is actually across the street from an elementary school, which is incredibly busy for us as well. So foot traffic tends to be a little heavier in the bigger city, but we anticipate with the drive-through, most of our focus is going to be heavy on catering to the drive-through and not so much based on our market research here in Spanish Fork, is going to be a lot of sit-down.
So second, second graders in Sugar House getting caffeinated in?
I guess we're the new McDonald's breakfast sandwiches.
Sorry.
Do you know how many, how many cars you can have queued in this? I know that Seth joked about In-N-Out, but how many cars could you have queued comfortably in this location?
So we hope to double In-N-Out's line. Just kidding. So we were able to map out comfortably eight cars. So that's based on what we've seen at the Dutch Brothers and Joe's, it's a lot, it's, it's significantly more, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Maybe this is a question more for Dave than you, but the fence moving back to the east there, is that remaining a chain-linked fence or is it a solid fence?
Yes, that will remain a chain-linked fence along the eastern boundary because the property to the north is a home, there will have to be a masonry wall constructed on that boundary, on that property line.
On the north end?
On the north side, yeah.
Any other questions for Ms. Soto?
No.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay, we may have other questions after the public hearing. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Seconded by Councilman Marshall. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for 8B. Anybody who would like to come up and speak to this item?
Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall. Seconded by Councilman Euler. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Discussion back up here. Any other questions for the applicant or staff on this?
I think this is a great place for this type of use. I'm very hesitant to say it's better than it was because there is an upcoming discussion that you could use the same argument for. But that ride-in is so much better than that very large access point right there. Safety is going to be improved. It's sort of going back to the roots of that location, right? Oh, I didn't mean to do that. I didn't mean to do that.
They're now going to use that as their tagline.
I'm not smart enough to think all the way through that, come on. But when we were growing up, that was a convenience store. A little bit, it was good access from the high school come up here. And I think it's a good spot for this and I'm pretty supportive of it.
Good use of the property too, right?
I think a little bit more, well, maybe more general. This council's taken some stabs at places along Main Street that have some parking issues, re-characterizing things, trying to improve it and make buildings be more viable. And this is a stab at that as well. But I think it's a, I think it's a, we're mitigating all the risks that we can there. And so appreciate the applicant helping us mitigate those risks and helping us not make a mistake here by being a good neighbor. And I'm sure with the dollars you're investing in it, you don't want to make a mistake either. But yeah, being cognizant of that, I think we can communicate that better to these applicants that we're taking a step here and we understand the risk to it. But if it's approved, wish you all the best and the queuing works and parking works as well. I think it's a good place to take that stab, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, and you see what the building is currently. And I did get online and look at your other two locations. You can see that you've put some good effort into improving those buildings and I'm excited to see what you could do here.
With that, yes.
I was going to say, with that being said, I'll go ahead and move to approve the proposed Roots Coffee Zone Change based on the following findings. One, that Spanish Fork City is prepared to provide services that the proposed zone change would require. Two, that the proposed site improvement plan includes improvements that are necessary for use of the site as restaurant with a drive-through. And three, that the improvements identified on the proposed site improvement plan, the proposed business can function without adversely impacting adjacent streets or neighboring intersections.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Marshall. Roll call vote here. Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck. Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Item 8B is approved.
Mayor, before you go on, I didn't want to say this earlier because I didn't want to prejudice anything, but as far as applicants go, these guys have been so great to work with. When they came to us originally, they had a number of hopes and dreams. And I think one of the first times we talked about it, they were, they probably left a little frustrated or maybe even disappointed because there were a lot of challenges to overcome. But they were really patient, really creative and thoughtful. And I think they worked really, really well with staff walking through all of those issues. And we concur with some of the sentiments that were just expressed in terms of how they're using the site and what they're going to do here. They've really been wonderful. It's probably not appropriate for me to say, you know, I have a favorite kind of an applicant. I'm not going to say that, but they're in that category. They've really done a great job. And I think from the staff's perspective, we appreciate that, that collaboration that we had with them. And we're excited for what they can do here. And I think they said they were going to have some great pastries there too, right? That promise was made. I think that might have been, I think it was condition number five.
But they put a limit on how many times you can come.
Yeah, but anyways, we really appreciate that work that you had in coordinating with us. Didn't want to say that before because I certainly didn't want to prejudice any of your thoughts, but now that you've improved it.
Dave, can I ask you one question that I should have asked during the conversation? Is this consistent with the general plan? I'm assuming it is because it's already commercial, that doesn't change.
Yes, the general plan designation is mixed use.
Okay.
And the C2 zones entirely consistent.
Thank you.
Neglected to mention coffee and donuts closer to the police station, probably.
That's what I was thinking too.
Right, I saw Chief over there nodding. The city office as well. Thank you for joining us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to Spanish Fork, appreciate that. Okay, moves us to item 8C. In our public hearing agenda, the Blunk Zone Change.
Well, there weren't half our crowd.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the item before you is located approximately 999 West, 3800 North. It's a roughly seven and a half acre property that's currently in the rural residential zone. It's surrounded by industrial-y zone properties as well as existing and future industrial-type developments in the nearby area. So the applicant is proposing to change the zone to the I-1 zone. It's consistent with the general plan designation of industrial. See there? This concept plan was presented to DRC to give an idea of the direction that the applicant is looking to go as far as developing the property with some industrial buildings. There are some, let's see. It's hard to see here, but there is some, there's an unapproved creation of a separate parcel along 3800 North that would need to be resolved as part of the approval process. And it would be taken care of prior to any plat recording or building permit issue being issued. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Is the applicant asking, or is the property owner asking for this change now? Or who is asking or initiating this?
It's a new property owner that's purchasing the property.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Can you repeat what you were sharing there at the end about what needs to get resolved?
Yeah, there's a, along 3800 North, there's a parcel that's currently in the right-of-way that would need to be dedicated to the city. And so that would be adjusted as part of the approval process.
Okay.
Any other questions before public hearing on this item? Thank you.
Thanks.
It's the applicant here that would like to speak to this.
Derek Terry, Kaysville. Yeah, I'm here representing the owners. Pretty straightforward, easy, hopefully.
Anything to ask the applicant? Thank you, Derek. Appreciate you coming.
It might be that easy.
Yeah.
I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing for item 8C.
I move that we move into public hearing.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for the Blunk Zone Change request. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to this? Seeing none, entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall. Seconded by Councilwoman Beck. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Not a very supportive second.
No, it wasn't, it didn't count.
It's a quiet second, but we're out of public hearing. Any other questions for staff or the applicant on item C?
Should we make it harder on him than just approve it? Or should we just go ahead and approve it?
Everything around him is already.
You know, what is, just, you do a good general plan, you follow through on the general plan, and it becomes that easy.
Yeah, the only reason, I'm guessing, it didn't happen when that property was brought into the city is because those property owners didn't want it to. Otherwise, it would have been brought in to match everything around it.
Yeah, they were in fact insistent and with some reluctance. They acquiesced to be annexed with a larger annexation, but were very particular about wanting the property to still have a residential zone, which frankly, as long as they wanted to use it as a house, gave them some options that they wouldn't have had if the zoning were changed to industrial. So it wasn't entirely without merit, but that was just a couple of years ago.
It was exactly with merit, right? I mean, you, we were going to talk a little later about non-conform use and that could have been an example of where they wanted to do something on their property that they've been doing for a long time. They couldn't because we changed the zone. So I think it was, that's how the process should work. I think it worked well and we're here tonight to follow up on the final resolution of it.
Correct.
I'd entertain a motion for item 8C.
I move to approve the proposed Blunk, Blunk, how do you say that name?
Blunk.
Blunk? Blunk? Zone change based on the findings and conditions in the report. Is that good or do I have to list those?
Everybody's been listening.
Yeah, listen, let's go.
I'm not hearing otherwise, so I'm going to say that's good enough.
I think it's good enough.
Blunk hasn't even looked up, so I'm good.
Second.
It's good.
I'd entertain a motion, a motion made by Councilman Carden. Seconded by Councilman Marshall. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Item 8C is approved. Thank you. Appreciate it, applicant, for joining us. Takes us to item 8D, the ordinance for the Rush Funplex Zone Change.
Okay, this item might be a little bit more detailed as far as the issues that might come up. This is the property where the current old Sugar Beet Factory is located. The applicant, in addition to this rezone proposal, had done a preliminary subdivision to split the property roughly into two, or this lot and then a remainder parcel to be developed at a later time. That preliminary plat was approved by the Planning Commission last week. But the proposal for the rezone is to change the current zone of rural residential to the C2 zone to be developed for a Rush Funplex development with... So this is the subdivision that was done. This is the concept that has been presented to staff. They're showing the Rush Funplex building located here. They do show a small retail building, potentially a restaurant with a drive-through. And then this new access road to the site that would be built along that eastern portion of the property. There was some public comments that came up during the Planning Commission that did bring up some concerns about that road, access, traffic, as well as the impending demolition of the old building and so, and the safety measures that would be put in place. But the Planning Commission, after reviewing it, did recommend approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So we, I'll ask my first question. Upon tonight, would we approve that road on the south to go into the existing neighborhood?
So the subdivision that was approved, I believe it did have some uneasement that was recorded, that would be recorded with that subdivision to put the road.
So the subdivision would need a road to go into that?
Correct.
Am I asking that correctly?
I don't know. Are you, are you asking the connection into the residential neighborhood?
We need a connection?
There's a stub already there.
Okay.
And so it would just connect, eventual development would connect to that stub that exists.
Okay.
Can you see that there in the kind of top right?
Which I guess makes sense to me for residential.
We don't have that in our items that we're scrolling through that picture there.
This is the first time we're seeing this?
Yes, so that, and it's turned.
Street A?
Yeah, Street A connects to the local, the existing.
Into that subdivision.
Into the stub. Correct. All right.
Is Street A part of the city's transportation master plan? Did we have that as being a street? Or is this being created as part of this development?
I think that's a great question. There has been some conversation about the potential change in the street that is, what is that, 1550 West? That State Road?
Yeah.
With the freeway changes and different things. It may be that that road goes away. And so if that road goes away in that area, then we would need a street network there with Center Street and the different things we even heard today in terms of the I-15. Transportation in this area could change. And so as we've been working through the development of this project, we've contemplated how to deal with that. And that's where Street A, that's really the genesis of Street A. And I don't want to be speaking out of turn, so Dave, Corey, if you remember, remember additional thoughts you want to have there.
Yes, that was, the genesis is 1550 West and the potential future of that going away.
There's always been a connection planned to come out of the subdivision, obviously with the stub that was created. In the last two or three years, as we've been studying the Center Street interchange and how that might interplay, I think this image actually shows, I think, a historical drawing of that. If you look kind of at the middle bottom of the page, I think you can see an off-ramp, what was an off-ramp. That's not what's being proposed, but that was, you know, one or two year ago kind of iteration of what UDOT was considering as a possibility in this area. And so we've been studying how to get the connectivity there. So that's not, that's not something that will be there. That's a historical line from a CAD drawing, but that's the genesis.
I want to like raise this conversation up a little bit or ignore for a moment what the actual use will be and talk about commercial in this area. So when did, when did we get approached? When did staff get approached by the applicant to change this zone, which will be inconsistent with our current general plan? When was that time? When did that happen?
Early 2024, I would guess. I mean, it's probably been close to a year since we started having conversations about what potentially could happen here.
Okay, so close to a year ago, right about the time that we started the general plan update, we got approached for a question about a commercial use in an area that is, would be inconsistent with the current general plan. And we're going through a general plan update today. I think this is the first time that we have seen something like this being proposed here. And I think it's disappointing that we're to this point with a preliminary plat in front of us without having the conversation about, do we believe as a city council that there should be a commercial, any commercial right here? We, this probably should not surprise any staff member that I'm going to have a concern about a one-off. But a one-off during the middle of a general plan update? We had opportunity to talk about this and we have yet to have, and yet we're here today having passed Planning Commission in front of us for the first time, asking us to be inconsistent with the general plan seems completely out of sequence with how we normally do business. I have, that's why I want to put what the proposal is, the Funplex aside. It may be a great use somewhere, but we have not had a conversation about what should be here. What should be around the future interchange? Is this around the future interchange? There's going to be some questions about how does this interact with the future interchange? And how do people access this? As part of the motion, there's some findings. One of which is Spanish Fork City is prepared to provide services to that, for that proposed change. I don't believe that is correct. I don't think that we're prepared to provide transportation solutions to this area yet. We have yet to get to the resolution on the I-15 Center Street. Every single thing in front of us today has been consistent with the general plan and we rely on that almost every single time we make one of these changes. And today, we're not. In this instance, we're not relying on that. And I have a serious problem with the unreliance of that. That bothers me. For staff to say that they believe that the general plan will be updated to accommodate this, believe on what? Believe on, what is that, what is that assumption based on? A conversation with any one of us? I don't know that that's the case. I don't know that that's the case. And yet we had time to have this conversation prior to today, and we have not had it. So I am, I'm concerned that we got to this point with an applicant that spent time and money to get to this point without having a conversation about, this is not consistent. That is not how should, this process should go. So I'm going to end it there. I know Jesse has some stuff he wants to probably talk about, but I am, I'm bothered by the fact that we're here today talking about it for the first time with, with everything we've been having, everything that's ongoing in this area to date.
So my, my follow-up or the thing that I had that I was concerned or was thinking about, the, one of the things that we've seen change from the state is preliminary plats and how they're approved by Planning Commission a lot of the times. And one of the things that, as I watched Planning Commission, as I watched the, just the interaction happen, one of the concerns I have is, and I don't know if this is consistent with our city, so there's a question here, I promise, is, um, that they are, so the zoning change goes through Planning Commission, comes as a recommendation. We approve a zoning change, but the Planning Commission approves the plot for this. Is that correct? So one of the concerns I have is that if they approve the plot before we've approved the zoning change, it a little bit puts us in a kind of a sticky situation because it's almost as if it's a little presumptive that we're going to approve it or that it's going to go through the process. Um, and that was just a concern as I watched Planning Commission this last weekend that, uh, I don't know, maybe going along with what Shane's saying is do, is that consistent with how other cities are approaching this new change? Or are we a little bit off on this and how we're approaching that? Because it just feels a little bit, I don't know, a little bit, puts us in a weird situation, in my opinion.
Maybe for starters, do you mind if we let Mr. Mann stand down?
Yes, please do.
Thank you.
The first time I see him is the first time that we have this conversation. I apologize to him.
Yeah, I've got more familiarity with the project just because of, um, different conversations we've had for a long time about the property. And maybe I'll start with Councilman Carden's, uh, question. It has been common practice for us, and, and you're right in that some things have changed over the years by way of, if we went back ten years ago, every preliminary plat got approved by the city council. And there was a baby step taken, you know, maybe about that long ago, before the legislature said cities have to do it that way to where the Planning Commission became the land use authority on preliminary plats. And at that point in time, probably, I use a phrase we use sometimes, just by way of, for ease of administration, where there's a zone change and a preliminary plat, um, and the preliminary plat doesn't necessarily need to be approved by the city council. We processed them still together. And, um, there's even a text member that we'll talk about later tonight that kind of relates to this. And in a lot of cases, the idea then, when the preliminary plat is presented to the Planning Commission, we're asking them to take action on it and to approve it. But oftentimes, um, you'll see in the reports that go to them, and one of the conditions with the preliminary plat approval is that that's subject to the city council approving the zone change. So, and, and I, I appreciate perhaps a feeling that if, you know, if you feel like as a council, that is presumptuous and maybe in one way or another limits your ability to take full discretion, then with the zone change, we certainly can change that practice. But in my experience, that's not out of line with how some other cities are operating as well. And it's generally how we've operated for some period of time. To put it in just a little more context, I'm not belaboring it, but, um, to do it a different way, an applicant would have to go through a full process on a zone change and then go through a full process on a preliminary plat. And we probably end up talking about a lot of the same things as we go through it. And there would not be anything wrong with that, but we've opted for maybe just a more expedient way to do things. Does that help at all?
A little bit, yeah. Gives a little bit of context.
Yeah, and I, you know, honestly, I'm not sure that one way is right or wrong. And if the council gives us direction to do it, whatever way, we'll do it.
I think more often than not, that process is probably okay. Because in, in my opinion, I mean, I don't know how many times that we have sat up here and told a, a adjoining property owner, well, this meets the general plan, so sorry, you should have talked to us during the general plan update. When we have sent our intent of what should be, what we believe this property will develop into in some future date, then I think that that process is fairly consistent and, and I think we can, we can deal with being somewhat put in the corner from a preliminary plat perspective. But in this case, I think it would have been very advantageous for us to have this conversation about a general plan update prior to this. I don't know that it would have led to anything different necessarily, but, um, having them stacked, in my opinion, three approvals, a general plan update, a zone change, and a preliminary plat for the first time in front of us is really difficult. I, I think that has put us in a very difficult spot.
Well, I don't think we're approving a general plan change.
We're not.
Yeah.
But if we didn't, it would be, we would approve something inconsistent with the general plan.
Sure, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So while, while in essence, we have not, I mean, in, in practicality, we have not, we have.
For sure.
Right?
And I think it's, it's part of that's got to be in, in what's relayed to the applicant, right? I mean, the applicant's got to know the, the risk that they're taking into, for sure. And, and I'm safe to assume that we're explaining those risks as the process goes on about, here's the hurdles to this. So people come in eyes wide open about what they're, what they're getting to in, in the, in this hour of approvals as well. I think we do a decent job of that.
Yeah, I'm sure there has been no guarantee by staff that this would be, um, approved by the city council. Not, not suggesting that that is the case at all.
I don't know, I, I mean, again, this is going back to what was here before, the pallet factory being here and the fingerprints on this property in a public-private connection way of getting, uh, getting this moved, getting that company moved is as, is as involved as we've been in anything as far as a municipality. And it's because of what you talked about, about a, a future exit and future interchange and, um, taking a, a pallet factory. We're, we built a subdivision, allowed a subdivision to be built up next to a pallet factory that they were wanting to get out of. Landowners wanting to get out of. And it makes a lot of sense to where they're now operating around other, other businesses that use their pallets, use their products, right? So, um, so a lot of discussion's been about this property. I've seen probably, what, twelve years of doing this, maybe ten iterations of what's, what's planned here. Here's what's coming in here, here's what's coming in here, here's what's coming in here, if we can get to this, right? You, you've seen a bunch of drawings of what this is. I don't know that anything's ever come to this point of, of having the public hearing on it, but, yeah, drawings of many different iterations of what goes here, what could go here.
But I guess to that point, right, I, I, with what you're saying, those, those, um, different iterations that we've seen, I, I personally have never seen anything of a commercial, like an intense commercial use. It's always been housing there. And so in my, I guess in my mind, that's, you know, and when we changed the general plan, I don't know if that was a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago. We, we obviously changed it to urban density from, I think it was industrial before, because we all thought that that's what was going to be there. So this is a first, maybe swing it at commercial in this area.
I think probably because the applicant was talking to us about that as well, right? It's not us just saying, well, this is the place for that.
For sure.
Probably the applicant's.
Yeah, we had a few applicants, the different iterations of it.
Yeah, yeah. Good discussion. Let's, are we okay to go to public hearing, uh, and discuss some more about it after we hear from the public? Maybe let's, if the applicant's here to talk about it before we go into public hearing, if they would like to. Let's see, there's the applicant.
Matt Gerch with Rush Funplex and.
Thank you.
F Valley Construction.
Any questions for Matt before we go into public hearing? Anything you want to say before we go into public hearing?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
I entertain a motion to go into public hearing for item eight D.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Marshall. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item D. Anybody from the public that would like to come up and speak to this item?
Hello, my name is Hannah Rasmussen. I live in the neighborhood that is directly east of the proposed, um, zoning remapping. Um, the following is a letter of concerns from several of the families in that same neighborhood. We stand in opposition to the plan to rezone the map from residential to the commercial for the Rush Funplex or any other commercial proposal. Our first concern is traffic. The proposed road to connect to four fifty south there where there already is the nub, we feel would increase the traffic there substantially. And we have kids crossing the street there all the time. And we're highly concerned that that will cause a problem for our children. The road has already seen increased traffic with the addition of the Urban Forest Disc Golf Course parking lot, where people often speed on that road. We're concerned that even more speeders will compromise safety that are crossing the road every day. Next, we're concerned about the security that is, that could cause problems with resid, or with commercial zoning there. We already have residents who have had to complain to the police about noise ordinance violations from the pallet factory without those violations being resolved. We already have many cars doing burnouts and donuts in the disc golf parking lot at night without being stopped. We're highly concerned that opening businesses, particularly those open late at night, Rush proposes to be open until midnight on the weekends, will attract loitering, petty crime vandalism to our neighborhoods. Next, we're concerned about our property values. Proximity to a commercial area, high-density housing, and increased traffic will without a doubt decrease the value of our homes. Residents chose this area specifically because it is away from the businesses of Spanish Fork proper, and we feel safe letting our kids play outside because we know everyone around. Introducing businesses to our area threatens to eliminate the very reasons we chose to live here by putting a business less than a block away and raising the number of visitors and traffic to the area. We have found justification for this, uh, development, that there will be a freeway exit nearby, is disconnected from the reality of our neighborhood existing framework. This justification ignores the fact that our neighborhood is established. The desires and frustrations of our current residents are established. We chose this area not because of a future freeway exit, but because there isn't one. This justification prioritizes the needs of future visitors over our current residents. Also, there is an inadequate barrier proposed for our residents. A council members claim that the road would act as a barrier between the neighborhood and the parking lot is not a genuine solution. In fact, a parking lot or road so close to backyards and second-story windows would only exacerbate the problem. Now, council members, I ask you to imagine if this were your backyard. How would this development impact you and your family? Would you feel comfortable with an increased traffic, light pollution, noise, and late-night commercial center mere feet from your home? Would you want your children playing in a neighborhood transformed into a thoroughfare for commercial visitors? Now, I know my time is up, but I just have one more, a couple more points for our proposed alternatives to this area. Replace the commercial high-density zoning with standard residential lots to align with the character of our neighborhood. Maintain the current zoning or explore community-focused developments that integrate more seamlessly with the existing neighborhood. Make this zone recreational and expand the current urban forest area as a larger park. We urge the council to prioritize the concerns of current residents over the speculative benefits of potential visitors. A petition may follow if this project continues without meaningful adjustments. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kristen Lemon. Um, I wrote down my thoughts because I don't speak off the cuff very well. I live on the north end of fourteen hundred west, and I listened to the planning committee meeting from last week about the Funplex proposal. I want to say, um, I would like you to say no to the proposal. I believe it would not lead to a better quality of life and that it would not benefit the neighborhood. I believe the Funplex would be better placed in areas in Spanish Fork where there are businesses similar to itself. A Funplex does not belong next to a neighborhood, even with a two-lane road to create a buffer. I come, I come home to get away from the activity of the city, not to continue being a part of it. I'm concerned that it will lead to decreased property values and make the homes along fourteen hundred west in the neighborhood harder to sell. On my list of what I want to look for when I look for a new home, a Funplex is not, next door is not on the list. The argument that this is how it is for other neighborhoods in Spanish Fork is not pertinent since there isn't choice anymore for what should and shouldn't be next to neighborhoods. But in this, there is choice now. With that choice, I choose no. I believe homes and businesses need to be separate from each other, especially those that have late hours. I don't foresee that the noise would be more than what's found at the Hive, but passing cars, doors opening and closing, the occasional honk of a car horn, and conversations should not be in the backyards of cities' residents. I believe that this needs to be kept residential and that business zones need to be separate from each other. Please vote no for rezoning the property to accommodate for the Funplex or other businesses. For the quality of life and property, the area should be residential and the Funplex should be, would be better in commercial areas, of the city, and I'd have no problem going if that was the case. Also, I think it would go along with the Blanc rezoning. Since they were being zoned for similar, I would like us to stay similar too, um, to stay residential. Thank you.
He's Kristen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jason Palmer. I also live in the neighborhood next to the Funplex in question. And I'd like to echo what they said, uh, in, in my support of that. Um, I'd also like to add that, that we, we are thrilled to have the, the idea of a Funplex in Spanish Fork. I have young kids, I think would be great. I just don't think that this is an ideal location for it because of its proximity to, um, to residential neighborhoods. Uh, other Funplex locations are open until ten o'clock at night, and I feel that that would be a negative impact to the neighborhood and the people living there. If, for whatever reason, the council decides that they want to make this a commercial-zoned area, it would be my preference to have something that would have normal work hours of, you know, i- i- if it was doctor's offices, if it was, if it was offices in general, that would be more appropriate for the neighborhood that this is next to than a Funplex that will bring more traffic, especially late at night. So, thank you.
Jason? Anyone else?
My name is Jake Glassley. I had the same concerns that, that Shane brought up, it not going with the general plan, the general plan currently being, um, urban residential and the work that's being done to update the general plan, nothing that I've seen or read or any of the, the participation that I've had with it, has there been discussion of making that commercial, but to keep it high-density residential? And I think that fits better with the changes that are coming to that area than it being commercial. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Any, uh, I entertain a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're out of public hearing for item D. Any other questions, comments up here?
Dave, based on the current general plan of this property, what is the max allowed units per acre? That if it were rezoned in accordance with what it's general planned for, what could end up, or what possibly could a, a property owner propose on that property based on what's general planned?
I appreciate that question, and I think that to some degree plays into how this got to where it is tonight with the recommendation that has, at least from staff. And incidentally, I really appreciate the feedback in terms of, um, the dissatisfaction that's been expressed about the process that this has gone through to get here tonight. But with the urban density residential designation, what we're talking to developers about or have been to some degree, including Mr. Girkie's group and others previously that we've spoke with, they're talking about twenty units to the acre, three or four-story buildings, um, maximum height of fifty feet, potentially as close as fifty feet to a property line. And in all candor, I believe that to repurpose a site like this that not only has considerable demolition costs that will have to be addressed demolition costs that will have to be addressed in order to put it to a new use, but also there's cleanup that has to happen relative to what's underground on the property today, different things like that. In all likelihood, it's going to take a pretty intense development of some sort in order to make a project work financially, which is partly how the urban-density residential designation ended up on the general plan. That's probably, I would say, right in line with, for example, like our commercial two designation in terms of just overall land-use intensity. So, and incidentally, I'm not, I'm not trying to defend how we got here tonight, but just to explain a little bit more about that, and I, I think it does relate to what the general plan would allow for now and, and what's being proposed. We're talking as well with Mr. Girkie's group about, Gurch or Girkie, I'm sorry.
Gurch.
Gurch, thank you. It's not the first time I've blown it. Gurch.
Mr. G.
The southern half of the property would be developed residentially, probably not at twenty units to the acre with what we're looking at right now, but, you know, more than ten, and that would be consistent with the general plan. The idea of having a commercial component of a development here didn't originate with what's before you tonight, kind of start a little bit smaller, hey, what do you think of this? In close proximity to an interstate, where we're pretty confident now there's going to be an interchange, some different things like that, next to a state road. And in all candor as well, given one of the hats that I wear in the economic development realm, when somebody said they wanted to build a commercial building like a Funplex here, it's pretty easy to support from, from that perspective. So, just a little bit more of my way of background on, on how this came to be, but in a nutshell, you could have some pretty intense land uses that would be consistent with the general plan. Let me mention as well that it sounds like we may have a homework assignment relative to the draft general plan that, probably about ninety percent through the process, but the timing's not terrible. If the council wants us to do a deep dive on this site, try to figure out, you know, what may be, maybe prefer there.
Detail that just a bit more maybe for, for me to understand it. Right now, if you live on the residential street fourteen forty, I believe, fourteen hundred, and look to the west, you're seeing a, a commercial building that's two stories and sometimes three stories high. Difference of the type of density that's been talked about here is four and five stories residential high, but closer to your street, not, not a parking lot in between you, full of pallets right now.
Potentially, certainly, and with the R4 zone, for example, the only thing I, I would correct, Mayor, I don't think you go five stories with the R4 zone, so four stories, three or four stories, not five. But we do require buildings to have frontage on a public street. We have determined that a street along the, the eastern boundary of, called the Sugar Beet Factory site, probably makes the most sense, but the idea that you would have residential buildings adjacent to that street then, fronting onto that street, that, that's kind of a fundamental of what we require with the R4 zone. And, you know, you say something like that, it comes across as maybe being a threat or some kind of scare tactic, but that, that's a very real scenario that could come about with something that would be consistent with the general plan. And honestly, I don't think necessarily would be the end of the world. This configuration, what we're talking about tonight with the commercial use, you know, should shed a little bit more light on how we've looked at it, it's not, in my view, unlike what we have with the neighborhood Walmart, where nine hundred south was designed to go between the backyards of the homes south of neighborhood Walmart, neighborhood Walmart to the north. And that seems to have genuinely helped create just the kind of space there that makes for better neighbors and the like. But...
Is that kind of buffer what they're currently having? Because I know that there's the buffer than the road on that, but I didn't see that on the preliminary plot.
So, with what is shown here, there'd be landscaping between the road and the backyards. There's already a wall there. In the case of the neighborhood Walmart, there is a really big pipe.
Yes.
That forced more elaborate space and landscaping and the like. But that being said, again, I'm not, I'm not trying to come across as being any more presumptuous maybe than we have been. There are many different ways that you could go about designing a development of the property. I really appreciate Mr. Gurch and his effort that his team has put into coming up with something that, at least from their perspective, can work, and that's what we've responded to, staff.
So, Dave, is it safe to say, based on the potential with I-15 and the project that's taking place with Center Street and not knowing for sure what's going to happen with that road to the west, is it safe to say that any development that comes before the city for this piece of property, they're going to look heavily at having that road, that, that extra road, that new road, Street A or whatever it was called, having that be part of a project, doesn't matter what it is?
Some sort of roadway connection, you know, if it's a residential, perhaps it's pulled away and then residential's against the fence with the road in front.
But there's, there will be need.
But some sort of, sort of connection and circulation to get, and get people out to the highways. And including this area, it's just the, the limited access to get in and out, and a lot of homes, we generally try to look for good circulation.
Yeah.
And that, that was the attempt of the stub road of someday, you know, staff at the time and whoever else reviewed felt that someday we're going to want another entrance in and out of the neighborhood just to provide good circulation. So that, that's why it was there, and we're just continuing that thought.
It was brought up or proposed, the thought of expanding or extending the urban forest. The city owns currently the property where the urban forest is. The city does not own the property that the Wasatch Pallett was on. If the city were to try and purchase just the property for, to extend the forest, do we have any idea what that property value, what it would be selling for?
I think the quick and easy answer is no, we don't have any idea. I mean, we could probably get an idea from the applicant in terms of what they're paying, right? It's going to be pretty expensive, and there is no forest there. Right? So in terms of the urban forest being extended, it would just be a park.
It wouldn't match, it wouldn't be the same.
Yeah, it would be some kind of park. We don't have, I don't have a really good idea of the price. I could, I could probably guess and be within a million dollars, but it's going to be a few million dollars.
And with that, I just don't think it makes sense to have I-15 a forest and then residential either. But I don't think I'm ready to...
Meaning, a new acc, a new access to the freeway and then having a park right next to that, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Does it make sense to have a park right next to a busy freeway?
I think higher density is the right place. I don't know if it's the right place for a commercial though.
It's an interesting conversation that we're having. It's sort of, it's really bad today, we have an opportunity to make it better, but it could be even more dense or more impactful with residents. Like it's, I don't know that all of that is consistent. I do know that whatever use we put there, if we, if we just leave the general plan and someone accommodates what the general plan is, these two ladies more than likely are back here having very similar concerns in terms of traffic, in terms of noise and those sorts of things. I think that the issues are actually different. I think they're, they're less because it's your community members, it's your neighbors that you're going to live next to and not a commercial area. But, but let's make no bones about it, if the general plan, if someone proposed what's in the general plan, there would be more traffic than there is today, right? There would be more people in this area than there is today, absolutely. I think that this is not a place for commercial. I think it's a place for residential, but I think we have to be creative about how we get there for sure, because it is a challenging site to develop. Looking at what UDOT presented today, there is no access to I-15 from this site. There just not. It is, you access this site exactly after the interchange the same way you do today, and that's on the state road.
First.
It's on first. You take the turn, that road is super narrow. I don't know that I want to put commercial at the end of that road. To me, it feels a lot like putting ALA at the end of Mil, is it Mil, what's that road?
Del Monte.
Del Monte. You put this, this thing that attracts traffic to it on the end of a little road that doesn't really support it, and to base this commercial on access to I-15, it's just probably occurred, it was the right decision when you look at that, that map that we saw earlier, because that's how UDOT had laid it out two years ago. But today, there is no access. So, I think there is, we, as a council, need to have this conversation about what we think should go here from a general plan, because there are issues.
Yeah.
And there is no good, perfect solution.
But like you just mentioned, if you do an urban development, a high-density development, there's the likelihood or the possibility that could cause...
You could.
Bring in more cars and more traffic than a commercial, which...
But, but I think that we should have that conversation in the public. We should have, we're going through a, we are, man, I talk like I'm from Spanish Fork all the time. We're going through a general plan update. That's where we should have this conversation. It doesn't apply just here, there's going to be areas throughout the community that are, that are...
Sensitive.
Very sensitive, and they are on the ver, they're on the, the fringe of current development. What are we going to do with it? What's the timing of all that? Like, we have some things to talk about. This is one of those areas. I, I am not ready in any way to say this is a place for a commercial today.
No, you, Shane, you make a good, you make a good point about the discussion. More than likely, I'd, I would bet if we went back in time and listened to the council meetings where they actually made this designation of urban, they would probably have explained the reason why they did at that time, and I would bet it has a lot to do with redevelopment of that building. And like Dave has already mentioned, it's going to cost that property owner a lot of money to do that cleanup, to get that property ready, to do any kind of redevelopment, and it's...
It's cost the city some money.
As well.
We were partners in it. Well, of course.
And so...
You bet.
And so, we could, we could change that to estate density and put one home per half acre. As far as general plan, that'll never happen, because the developer will never be able to make enough money off of that size of a lot to get back what he's going to have to pay to tear that down, clean it up, and so, so I agree, there needs to be a discussion, but it's not as, not as cut and dry, not as easy as just...
Nope, not at all.
Attaching the neighborhood to the east, right? Because...
It's a different property.
It's different property, different, there was no Sugar Beet Factory already existing on those properties, and so that property owner, all he had to do was develop a field, right? And so, very, very different situation. My question, I guess, to some of the residents would be, if that's the case, and it comes down to if we ever want this property to develop, do we want it developed commercially like we've seen tonight? Or would you prefer to have three- or four-story apartment condos overlooking your house, looking into your backyard? The lights that come on, we can't require them to put blinds on their windows, they could turn their lights on all day, all night. There are a lot of other scenarios that could play out with this property that may, in the end, be worse than what we've seen tonight. And so, those are some of the questions that we've got to ask ourselves, is if not this, then what?
I agree with you, Kevin, a one-hundred percent, that that conversation needs to happen, and I don't know necessarily that it needs to be, that it shouldn't be commercial today. I am sure that I cannot make that decision today. That's what I know. And I think this property, this, this area deserves the conversation holistically. I mean, I, the fact that the Planning Commission approved a preliminary plat that's inconsistent with the general plan is concerning to me. They should have had this conversation very publicly, addressed this conversation. They should have discussed this, they should have debated this, they should have walked through those scenarios and come to the conclusion that general plan needed to be changed or it didn't. And we just haven't had that yet.
Yeah.
And it needs to happen, that's the process, and I think we owe it to the, the residents to have the conversation.
Yeah, and I, I would follow my, have myself in a similar situation, right, where I, there's no way tonight I would be able to bring myself to approving commercial. And Kevin, I think you bring up some great points. There is a chance that this is going to be higher density, right, or, or something maybe that residents may or may not like more. I do think that we, when we start talking about traffic, commercial traffic is different than residential traffic, no matter how we spend it, right? It may be more people in residential, but it, but it's just a different type of traffic. The other part, I think that I just want to bring up, is we did receive a couple of letters from, from residents in the neighborhood too, and we did receive those, we have, we have looked at those as well, and thank you for the residents that showed up tonight and for the input, like, there was a lot of people at Planning Commission as well. But tonight, I would, I would be, I don't know if we are, if we vote for denial for me, or if it would be a continuation, because we just need to have the conversations. Either way works for me, but I do think that, like Shane, you bring up great points, we have to have a further conversation on this piece of property before we can move forward with anything.
Maybe I want to clarify a couple of points. The, the chance of something being here is, I think, I think is not as clear as we need to be. There will be something here, and it will be intense.
For sure.
Traffic will be here, a use will be intense here. It's between I-15 and an exit that the taxpayers have paid to study and will at some point be configured here to just what we went through count, car counts of who will get off an exit right close to this area. So, it will be intense. It's always been talked, as long as I've been here, about the intense use of, of this. Wasatch Pallett was pretty intense, and taxpayer money went to move that intense use to be more compatible with, with the industrial area. So I don't think you're seeing industrial come back here, but you certainly will see some, some level of high-density residential, some level of possibly commercial. My next question, and, and maybe this is going a little bit too far, maybe the Planning Commission discussed this, but we had a coffee company here earlier that had a, a proven model, if you will, that they've done before, is, is the Funplex something that is in other places? Is that a business model that is plug-and-play here in Spanish Fork that we know this operates in other cities or a franchise or something like that? I think Mr. Gurch probably could best answer that. Is this something you know?
Yeah. I would certainly respect, you know, the concerns of the residents along the side of this, but I guess what I would invite is, you know, we have a hundred and twenty thousand square foot facility in Syracuse that's no more than twenty feet away from the residential neighborhood behind us. And so, I would say before we jump to a conclusion that it's going to be this disastrous noise or anything like, I mean, one thing, point I would make is, our customers are the families that are surrounding us, and so we make every effort to be good neighbors. We, there's really nothing that we offer inside that is really noisy. Our general customer base is families, and so, you know, I, I get where it's easy to assume there will be screeching tires and traffic in our, all, all night and whatnot, but even on your weekends when you're closed at midnight, one thing that makes a difference is, you know, ninety-five percent of our, our cells are three-hour passes. So, it doesn't make sense for new customers to come in at nine, ten, eleven o'clock at night, they're not even going to get the use out of their three-hour pass. So usually by, by ten o'clock, even on a weekend, the traffic has died down significantly, and, and everybody's out the door by twelve. So, to answer your question, there, Syracuse is, you know, year and a half, that's the best, closest, we have a location in the University Mall in, in Orem, and we have a location in, at Jordan Landing, but those aren't up against residential. But if you, if you wanted to get a feel for what it's like at night, I mean, it would probably be a worthwhile trip to go sit in the parking lot or go spend some time in Syracuse. But we've been there now for fourteen years in Syracuse, up against a residential neighborhood, and haven't had any, any problems there. So that's what I would speak to, that. The other thing I would like to speak to, and I, and I, I respect the process and the, whatever corners you might feel like you're up against tonight, but the, you guys have touched on it, but I've been a developer for twenty years, I'm on the development side, and long before I got involved with the entertainment centers. But I've run the numbers, and, and you guys are, what you're saying is exactly true. We wouldn't be here if there wasn't the... if there wasn't the, the rush component to it. There's no way to pencil it with the cost of the demolition. So I believe a vote to not do commercial is essentially a vote to leave the, leave the buildings that are there. And I know that we're not here to discuss the rush specifically tonight, is general, commercial or not. But, uh, I would say that having the, having, knowing what the commercial would be is a far better position to be in than a position of, well, we turned down the rush, they went away, and, and then we decided later down the road, it's commercial, and it could be any, any number of, like you said, it's probably going to be something impactful. The biggest thing I think we could offer to our plan that we're proposing is there is that little, uh, building outside of the rush Funplex, and that is not cr- critical to our development. So if that, you know, if it was only the fun center, it's a completely enclosed, no outdoor activities. If that was the only thing that were looked at or considered for, uh, approval, and I know that's not what we're approving tonight, we're just, but, uh, you know, if that's something we could offer to help out and take that off of the, off, off the general idea, you know, we would be willing to do that.
And you're referring to the drive-through?
Yeah. Yeah. Frankly, honestly, that was something our engineer put on there trying to make use of the property.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. That answers my question.
Vaughn, can I ask you a question? Difference tonight between tabling this to continue discussion and continue to possibly discuss or talk about the things that were brought up tonight as compared to denying the proposal? What are the two differences there?
Well, tabling would keep it alive, and you, you would, you know, you're postponing decision on it until you feel you've had enough discussion and information. Uh, denying it ends the land use application, and they would have to reapply at some point in the future.
Thank you.
I guess that, why, that's a good question. For me, th- th- this is a unique, uh, item in, again, trying to protect taxpayer dollars in this, the uniqueness of this, in that we haven't owned this property as a city, but we have, we have, uh, been in a, in a quasi-partnership of moving the, the current use off of it. And, and so, um, that's my two cents, is that's where I would lean i- if, if we're talking about the process that maybe we feel needs to, needs to be a little bit different to get to, uh, a general plan designation that would accommodate a zone. I would be more apt to the, to maybe the tabling aspect of it, simply because we, we have done so much over so many years in partnership with this, with this project. I mean, the, the rail itself that goes in there and getting that approved for a different location.
Yeah.
This was a huge lift by this department, but at the taxpayers' expense of Spanish Fork City to do it.
Yeah. And I've, I've really not had an opportunity as yet to talk to some of the residents that live, live in this area. I would love to. I'd love to have some conversations and bloat some ideas of what if this, instead of this? How would you feel about that? And kind of see how they feel about different things as well.
And I'm sure, or I hope that tonight has opened your eyes as what is potentially going to be there. And you can take that back to your neighborhood and maybe have some open, honest discussions and report back to us, because we, we do care and we want to hear. That's important.
Yeah.
And you guys may come back and say, this is actually a better alternative than what could be there. So.
Seth, you look like you want.
Well, I was going to say something, but Shane was going to say something, so I'm going to wait.
Go for it.
Shane will say something.
Yeah. So if you, if you want to, you know, however you want to proceed is obviously your choice. If you want to table it and give us some homework assignments in terms of finding different things, you know, we can go look for different areas that may be similar in, in terms of, uh, commercial abutting residential and, and do some research with those cities. And we, if you want us to do some research and, and involve you in any ways, just let us know any thoughts that you have, and we're happy to do that. I think it's, I think it is helpful, at least for the council, to consider. As you look at this area, um, this subdivision was built, uh, started about tw- almost exactly 20 years ago, maybe now 21 years ago. When it was initially constructed, there were four total connection points into the subdivision from, from Volunteer Drive and what became West Park Drive and our First South, and then, uh, those three, well, no- nothing from Volunteer Drive, sorry, only from First South and West Park Drive. Um, one, two, three connection points. And since then, there was another subdivision that added a fourth. And there are still planned at least three, maybe four additional connection points into the subdivision where the hope, eh, from the conception of the project, uh, this neighborhood, uh, just is that better connectivity. And right now, there are one or two areas of the neighborhood where the majority of traffic flows by, because that's the only way really in and out of the neighborhood. And so the idea always is with the subdivision, increase access points, decrease, you know, the, the places that feel the brunt of, of that traffic. So I think, I think sometimes, especially in a project, uh, you know, has been in place for 20 years, um, there may be some hesitancy about opening up those access points. And I'm not just talking about the access point on the west side here, but, but some that are on the east end of the, of the neighborhood. The, the intention from the beginning and, and I think the street network plan that we have will include, would include having those connection points. Um, and so the, you know, people that live in what is probably the most quiet part of the neighborhood today, eventually we'll have some traffic that might throw, flow through there, because those, those stub roads are there with a purpose to be that stub road. So I, I think it's always a helpful reminder. I lived there, moved away for a season, now I'm back. So, yeah.
I, I think, I mean, that, we, we walked through that conundrum, if you will, up on the, what, east side, south end of town, above the river bottoms, where those stub roads were coming into development that was undeveloped farmland for a very long time, and we finally made the connection. And yes, traffic will increase. Same thing here. I, those things are spot-on true. The, the city working with UDOT, um, went through a very big lift to, to help move the business that was very incongruent with the surrounding land use. And that was, that was something very beneficial to the taxpayer. We did that to, one, get that use out of there, and two, to accommodate a future infrastructure improvement with I-15. Um, a lot of that we are going to get reimbursed for from the, from the state once all that goes in. But not all of it, right? We still, we still spent taxpayer dollars to do it. So I'm very aware of that and want to make sure that we put the best use we can there. Um, I'm not necessarily in favor of tabling it, because I don't know that it gets us to where we need to have the conversation. Um, my, my issue isn't with the Funplex. My issue isn't with residential and commercial abutting. That's not my issue. That happens, and that happens all over the place. It's the location that we want, that this, this proposed commercial is being proposed in. It does not, in my opinion, it's not conducive to commercial. This area is not. Um, there is no access to I-15 here. All access to this commercial place will be through a residential area. First South is a state area, I understand that. And it is, it is probably a higher level of roadway than a neighborhood straight, granted. But it is, this to me is putting commercial at the end of the dead-end road for all intents and purposes. I'm not comfortable with it. And I think the conversation around what general plan designation this should be needs to happen. I don't think that by tabling is, tabling this, that it happens in the right way. I don't like to, to put it on the, the property owner or the surrounding neighborhood. You might hate this more than this. We should talk about what the best use there is, and then move forward with, with mitigation efforts to make that work. Um, that conversation will come up, that, you know, maybe the commercial is better because of X, Y, and Z. Commercial traffic, to Jesse's point, is significantly different than residential traffic. It may be the same volume. It occurs at different times. And it current, and it occurs in different intensities. Um, so just, I, I'm uncomfortable with this here, and I'm uncomfortable with tabling it. And if I was to make a motion, it would be to deny the application and then instruct the, the planning commission to have the debate about what land use should be there. And I've said plenty tonight on this issue, so I will sit back and, and watch. But if it's time for a motion, I will make one to get the ball moving, and you all are welcome to vote accordingly.
You can say you, you.
You can go say what you'd like to do.
You said I would make, if, if I would make a motion.
I would make one if it's time to do so, if no one else has any.
Discussion before.
Are you more discussion?
He's working on a motion.
Before.
Take a motion.
All right. I moved to deny the proposed zone change for the rush Funplex.
Second.
Based on the finding that is inconsistent with the general plan.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Marshall, second by Councilman Carden. Any discussion on that motion? Questions for clarification? A roll call vote. Councilman Took?
Yes.
Councilman Carden?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
No.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Shit. I said Shane. That was weird. Yes.
I thought I heard a different word than Shane.
I thought, I was going to say Shane. I don't know, no problem. It's been a long night already. Yes.
Yes, to Councilman Marshall's motion, the motion passes four to one. Uh.
One thing that you said, you didn't include in the motion, but I heard you say, and, and so I think looking to Dave would be the direction of the planning commission to take the issue up and discuss this specific spot in terms of general plan use.
In, yes, yes, for sure. And I think that we can wrap that into the general plan update.
For sure.
It can be in that ca- same conversation. But, I mean, when we, when we start talking about change in use that abuts residential or farm or whatever it means, we should bring in the right people that are surrounding that use and have a conversation with them, specifically. And I think this is a good time to do that. So yes, that is the, that would be my direction to the city, to the planning commission.
And you want them, uh, specifically to, to look at the areas, look at the business that Mr. Gerch talked about, or is that?
If, if they want to take that into consideration, that's totally fine. But I think it is, to me, it is a should, what is the best general plan designation for this, this area?
I would, I would think it would make sense for them to be looking at this business, because we have a, a developer business that is interested in the area and has shown, you know, some, that, hey, this is something that could work for us. Why not give that opportunity as we're going through this process?
Yeah, I shouldn't say, I shouldn't take that opportunity away from them, for sure.
So this is currently zone resident, rural residential, which is, the thought I was having was to give him, have him give us some specific directions, so we have that pending, pending zone change doctrine. But I don't think that applies, because the zone, because it's zone rural residential. So I don't think we need a motion to give us that direction, to give us any kind of safe path, right? We don't, yeah.
This proposal's dead.
Right.
So be it new.
But, yeah. Anyways, I don't need a motion. I was thinking I might need a motion for some specific reasons, but I, we don't need that. We've got the direction.
Because I couldn't come up with one.
Maybe this is after the fact. A general question about the, the road, um, the bridge that crosses there. And, uh, I mean, I mean, is it realistic that, it, it seems like there's other options, just in my uneducated view of this, of, of that road still being able to, to be there in, in some way? Maybe, well, I'm talking the current road, not a, not a new road abutting that subdivision, but the current road being into the property at all. Uh, I know that, that bridge is there and been there for a long, long time. But does that, that whole road goes away?
No, not necessarily. But, um, different options about, uh, is at 100 South the correct place to cross I-15? And what other options are there for flyovers and that? I don't know how that includes in here fully. The bridge itself, from a floodplain standpoint, is built too low.
Right.
Someday, at some point, if we improve, or if UDOT improves that, it needs to be raised in some signi- significant work. So let's say they wanted to widen it. I think from a floodplain standpoint, we'd have to demolish and, you know, kind of bring that up to solve, you know, some of the flooding concerns we saw there. Um.
Mike, are you talking?
So I don't know that that's dictating that that's there. Is that, did I understand the question correct?
Yeah. Yeah. I guess that's where I'm starting.
The river bridge?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's where I'm starting to talk about, you know, what, what goes here and, and what's the, the way out of here, whether it's going to be three-story, uh, four-story units, whether it's going to be commercial, whether it's going to be something here. Is it always going to be on a, a, a dead end, um, kind of, kind of scenario? Uh, and, and without a significant lift to get you north-south on that 100 South that bends, it will be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think there is a need to address east, east-west traffic across I-15. The current underpass, if you will, is not adequate into the future long-term. Right now, with the study, the environmental that's done, they looked at it keeping that there. Um.
I'm not talking as much underneath I-15 as I am across the river, right there.
Sure. Yes, there will be a north-south component across the river, for sure.
That stays all the time there.
Correct. Yes, there will need to be. Absolutely.
We need that.
Yeah. But I think it's, it's still unclear whether the interchange project will impact SR-115.
Yep. Yeah, right along that type.
And if it does not, I mean, there's a definite chance that it could move into this property, right? And that's one of the reasons that we went through the process of moving them, because it could be impacted.
Right.
Physical impact, not just the rail spur.
Right.
Um, so I think there's that unknown.
But does that mean we wait five, 10 years before we can do anything with this property?
I don't know that it means we wait that. I think that we need to take into consideration what, let UDOT give us some footprints that we can understand the impacts of this property a little bit better. And what is the access to this property? If, if 115 isn't improved, and it's just that little two-lane crossing across the, the Spanish Fork River, it will always be a two-lane road, right? Who's going to make that improvement? And if that is the case, how much intensity can we afford there?
Can we hold that landowner to something for that? I mean, if I'm the landowner and I'm, I'm wanting to do something.
I think a call that will happen about eight, eight oh one tomorrow morning will be the landowner calling and saying, hey, what, you know, what am I supposed to do?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think our answer includes, we don't know, right? Um, and that's, I think the landowner, rightfully so, has a huge frustration of, I'm really being held hostage by some of these things that are beyond his control. What are you doing with I-15, UDOT? What are you doing with that road, UDOT, et cetera? And we'll just have to walk through it with him. You know, it's just, it's not an easy answer.
And, and again, meanwhile, it's tough, because that, because that is a, that's a place that you talk about burnouts, you talk about unsafe.
It should not be there.
The, the safety of that standing every single day scares.
Yep. And, and, you know, in terms of the site, as we've walked through with the applicant, in terms of this site, um, we've got as good information as we could out of UDOT, right? We preserved corridors along there to, to give us the ability and flexibility for what could come as best as possible. Um, and that's been something that we've been thinking about all along the way. Are we going to get it right? You know, we don't know. We just don't know what that is. But we've, we've done the best that we can in terms of looking at how that site could have been, um, with all of the information that we have available at that time.
We, we have, their preferred alternative has a footprint today. That is the best piece of information that we'll be moving forward. So now you take that and apply it in this, since this, in this instance, and I think we can.
And that's the best we've got, right?
Start answering some of those, right? Right. There's still a ton of moving parts down there. UTA, this, our general plan, like, if we could have created more, I don't know how we could have created more discussion around this corridor than, than what we've created today. I mean, it's just, it's insane.
One interesting challenge is corridor preservation. For example, if that, if you wanted to say, well, we, we may just want to buy the piece with corridor preservation funds. As long as the building's there, they can't, because of some of the environmental issues. And so that's not even available to them.
To, to Mike's point, I think that is a good point, that there is some financial realities of this thing, that one was, there's a taxpayer investment here, because we don't want that use there. And so it is, I get the complexity of it 100%. And, and I think it's a good challenge to have the planning commission lead this effort of what should go there and give us a good recommendation. Sit down with the, the land adjacent property owners and talk about the trade-offs between commercial and high-density residential, or whatever it might be, and really explore that in, in a public setting, and then come back and debate it and give us a recommendation.
And I think some of that information, like what we're looking at, some, some visuals of some other places of, of what it's been and where it's worked, I think that's been helpful on the east side, where developers have showed us, well, here's a grocery store next to these ho- these type of homes, and it's made it a visual look of, oh, that, that that works there, you know, it can work there. So appreciate you looking into that and giving us, giving us some of that information to the city. Okay. Uh, thank you for the discussion. Moves us on to item E, uh, in our public hearing, the December 2024 Title 15 Amendments. Moves us on to item E in our public hearing, the December 2024 Title 15 amendments. Okay, kind of winding down. Once again, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Oh, we're just starting, Dave.
Okay. I'm gonna go high level and let you guys do a deep dive. Every one of the changes that's proposed here, we call it the December 24. Proposed amendments to Title 15, there's some kind of a story behind each of these. Like I said, I'll start, just go on high level. But we have referencing page numbers. There's a proposal to change how we measure setbacks to account for eaves. Page two, that change would bring how we do that into conformity, as I understand it, with the majority of the communities in our part of the world. Right now, we're not doing things measuring quite the same way as other communities when it comes to setbacks. And Eve, some of you, I think, have had conversations with some local builders that have expressed frustration by way of how we measure it. Our building official is supportive of the change that we see there on page two. And anybody want to talk about that building setback? Okay, also on page two.
My internet's out again, so I was looking at your screen.
She's like, don't do it.
Page two, and then again, sprinkled throughout pages four through 12, simple change to clarify what a suitable wall type is, where we require walls, particularly where we require walls to separate either non-residential developments from residential properties. For example, we talked earlier tonight about the Roots proposal and the need for a wall between that and the home to the north. This simply clarifies what that wall would need to be constructed of or like in order to, in order to satisfy that requirement. On page three, we've talked with this about, I'm sorry, we've talked with the council about this a few different times when you've seen individual proposals where people have requested to be able to build fences that are taller than six feet in industrial zones. This would make that just simply allowed. Pretty straightforward. Again, I think that's consistent with what we've discussed. Onto page 16. Preliminary plat applications for master-planned developments. I don't want to make this more complicated than it needs to be. In the November Planning Commission meeting, Mr. Pecel and I sat next to one another over here, and there was a little bit of conversation among planning commissioners about a specific proposal and whether or not they were the land use authority for a preliminary plat that happened to be a master-planned development. And years ago, it was very clear that it was the city council. That situation's gotten muddied as we've created this new master-planned development overlay. This language is intended something to clarify that the city council is still the land use authority for preliminary plats that involve master-planned development overlay. I, I think that's a good change, or a good thing to clarify because the council is already the legislative body. You're acting on the, the zone change. I think it makes perfect sense just to also have the council be the land use authority, which incidentally, this is one case where the state law does allow for the council to be the land use authority on preliminary plat approvals, so. The next one, the R4 zone, couple of different potential changes to that. I'd be happy to do a deep dive on this if you'd like. Mentioned this with the last conversation that we had. At least on B I did, so I'll start with B, 5B. We require buildings. I'll tell you what, I'll go back to 5A. Sorry, Jack, didn't mean to throw you off, so, page 17. Parking, parking requirements. We require quite a bit of parking compared to what some other communities require for multifamily developments of certain types. And we get pushback from developers as we work with them on that. And I'll just use real-world example. We were talking with the folks that wanted to develop the residential portion of the Western Distribution Center property, the mouth of the canyon. This was probably back in August when we're working on what's becoming their latest iteration of that project. And looking at the amount of parking that they provided on the site then, and also where we require public streets, the space that clearly is available and clearly would be used as parking by residents or guests in the project, and seeing there's quite a bit of that. I would say that we as staff warmed up kind of for the first time to the idea of allowing a developer to count some on-street parking towards their parking requirement. Not all. As the proposal reads, up to 20% of their parking requirement could be satisfied with on-street parking. For example, in the R4 development where today all buildings have to have frontage on a public street, you do end up with very functional, desirable on-street parking. Oftentimes, it's located closer to somebody's front door than the off-street parking is. This is a change that I think results in more functionally designed sites. Probably sites of a little bit smaller off-street parking lots. All in all, just more efficient designs.
Dave, before you move off that one, I've got a question. So do we currently encode anywhere allow as part of development plans on-street parking? Or is this, this will be totally new, this 20%?
It's a, it's a significant change. I didn't highlight this, but I'll point it out now. Get the right page number here. For example, our, our parking requirements now, the heading on the section, page 22, if you want to go to that. Today, the heading on the section there, Jack, if you could go. Yeah, thanks. Just the very top of it. Go up a little bit, I think. Yeah, so today, the, the requirement is off-street parking. So in part, to make what's proposed here work, that would be retitled to just parking requirements. And I'll read what's proposed there on that page accepts, excuse me, exceptions to this requirement. Well, I'm sorry, I need to start with what exists in the code now. Required parking shall be provided onsite or on contiguous lots. Okay, that is to say, it can't be on-street during any other way, off-site. Now, what's proposed is in addition to that, that reads, exceptions to this requirement may be granted by the city council for projects in the R3 and R4 zones where up to 20% of a development's required parking may be provided on-street. So that's not a cart blanche. Yes, you can do it automatically. It would require consideration on the part of the city council when you're reviewing what most likely would be a plat approval tied to a master-planned development.
So Dave, if we were to get hypothetical, because we don't have a lot of R4 zoning as of yet, how many parking spots, like the, behind the small mart, that development, would they be able to reduce behind their, their complexes and count for onsite? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, let's just do some math, and I'm going to use round numbers here to make it easy. Let's say that project has 200 homes in it, and we require two and a half parking spaces per home. So that's 500 parking spaces altogether that would be required. Conceivably, a developer could satisfy that parking requirement by having 400 off-street parking spaces. That'd be 80% of the requirement, and 100 on-street parking spaces, if they could design it.
So is our intention just to reduce the number of parking spots that are required essentially for an R3 and R4 zoning?
Off-street, yes. I mean, I think that, I'd say.
Functionally, that's what's happening, right? Because today, you can legally park on-street.
Yeah.
So the width of the street doesn't change after this change.
So.
The only thing you get, you get credit for that on-street parking that occurs today. So in essence, you're taking the two and a half, two and a half units, two and a half stalls per unit down to around two.
Is there?
Functionally, yeah.
Any concern, Dave, where now in our code, we are allowing developments to be built with, including off-street, but then certain times of the year in the wintertime, we're telling people you cannot park on the street, and we've removed any alternative parking within the development?
That's it, right? And that's been, that's been the rub, as we've talked about this for years. I have an opinion on how that issue should fit into the, the priority scale of how we design neighborhoods and projects and so forth, but that's true. As I understand it, the ordinance is you can't park on-street.
Up to two days.
Yeah.
So residents would maybe have to get creative, figure something out.
How, how do you do that in a R3 or an R4 building, though? There's no creativity unless if you're parking in, parking down the street in a church parking lot or parking in a commercial area.
During a snowstorm.
Thinking of the neighborhood, the, the apartments by the neighborhood Walmart. If we had reduced that parking, they would be parking in, during the snowstorms, they'd be parking in the Walmart parking lot and walking through there.
They needed more than two stalls per unit.
Yeah.
Does our enforcement maybe change a little bit? Do we approach it differently?
Meaning certain locations, we ignore that rule of snowplow. Is that what you're saying?
Modify.
Modify? I don't know.
You certainly don't have to approve this change, right?
Yeah.
I think, and you've, you've said in there up to, well, first of all, this is, this gives you, this only gives you the ability to violate that, but it gives you the legal authority to do that, right? So it's not a violation.
My guess, my guess is once this is in.
If Vaughn would pay attention, he would be like, wait a second.
Once this is in code, everybody's going to be asking for it.
Yeah, but you don't have to give it to them.
Yeah.
Oh, but they're going to come in here and whine and cry that the only way they can afford it is if we do this and we're going to save humanity by offering affordable housing. And if we don't, then we suck. Am I off there?
I think you said it right. The development I think of when we're talking about this is, like, you know, Somerset is not our one, it's not either of these zones, but I think about the parking requirements that we have. And we've had this conversation so many times up here about whether or not 2.5 is this magic number, which we know it's not, but we haven't figured that out. So I just get worried that we're just trying to, to fix it with, you know, maybe being creative, which I think it's great to be creative, but we do have some concerns with that. But we're just not, we're not getting to that, where is that answer? Because when we start talking about these bigger developments, 2.5 might not be the answer. And so do we need to figure out different ways? And so I get where we're going, it's just I don't know that that is the answer to that, that problem, anyway. That's where I'm at.
The same time, you don't want to make, um, I guess it's not the, the best policy for maybe more affordable housing to, three to five times during the year, it snows enough that you have to remove your car? I mean, that's going to happen this year, but it's going to happen three times. So it's not like it's for three months in our city, it snows enough.
That could change.
Yep.
It could get cold.
I think that's a good point, Mike. I think that is, you never want to design something for those three worst days of the year, right? I think that is a good point. But I think by doing it this way, as opposed to adjusting the 2.5 to the effective two, you have, in my mind, guaranteed a parking spot on-street. And that day you need it moved, it feels like you have less ability to do so because you have by code granted, for all intents and purposes, a driveway in, on-street. So it, it, if we're going to attack parking, and a 2.5 is not the right number, let's attack the 2.5 number and not back into it via this, this thing. And I think too, I needed to put both of these sentences in this, like, both of these changes go together, right?
Kind of, yeah.
Right? So it's, it's up above, it's, you have, you can use up to 20% bottom below. You can only do it in the R3 and R4, and the council has to approve. So in the context, it makes a little more sense to me now. But not any public street would we want to grant this for, right? Like, if there was a collector road through the middle of a R3, R4, we would not want to include parking on that collector as parking for the residents, correct? So I think there is, I get where you're trying to get to, and I think it is creative. I would rather try to figure out if two or 2.5 or three is the right number than back into it this way. I don't like, I don't necessarily like granting the, the right to park on the city street like this. What if one day we wanted to remove that right to park? Then where are we at?
Can you?
I don't think you could now, not with this.
Well, I don't think you can now.
True you could.
You can, on a public street, that you can.
We, we had that conversation earlier, yeah, I think you could. Like, we could say on Main Street, there's no parking. We, we did that on 1050, 1150. What is the road?
We're talking more on neighborhood.
Yeah, but.
Streets.
I don't disagree. If that is, if, if we, if we want to move it to there, we should be very clear that we're talking only on neighborhood streets then. It's not what it says yet.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to think about these developments that you're trying to talk about. Are they going to have enough, enough street frontage that, you know, that it, that it's going to make that difference? Right? Is it going to be that 100 cars on there? And again, yeah, I guess, I guess what, what you're asking, what we're trying to get to is developments that are, that the applicants are saying, we don't have two and a half cars, we're, we're building a development.
Correct, yes.
That is one car.
Yes.
We're building developments, there are two cars at most, and if I could be two cars and three more, because I got three teenagers, the, the, the dwelling doesn't even exist here, so I'm not going to have it.
I, I'm with you 100%. I think that is, that's where we should talk about the number of units per, the number of stalls per unit adjusting and not back into it by saying, let's include these, these five over here to lower that number. Let's just be direct about it and say, you have presented us a, a, a development that you don't want more than one car or two car per dwelling. And so therefore, we don't want you to provide, you don't have to provide to 2.5. I'm fine having that conversation.
Right.
Fine having it. And I think if we could write it in so that we have flexibility to do that, that's great. I don't like backing it in with this methodology.
Dave, how often when, when somebody comes to your office with a proposal, do you receive a complaint from that individual about our parking requirements? Is it almost every, every proposal?
Boy, I don't like speaking in absolutes, I really don't. So I'm trying to think.
Is it, is it, I guess, not how often specifically, but does it happen often enough that this is the reason why?
Yes, there's another side to this concept, though, that I think is really important to at least talk about here. Developers push back on us requiring them to have public streets in their project. Instead of a 60-foot wide right-of-way, they'd much prefer to have a 32-foot wide drive aisle that has 24 feet of asphalt and no parking. That's what they want. Now.
It's old.
We approach things differently, and with what we require of developers, we have streets built to accommodate parking. At least most of the time, and certainly there are some where parking is restricted in one way or another, and that's partly why we do have an evaluation component of this to, for example, we're working with the developer that is planning to utilize something like this, and on their project, they have identified on the plan, you know, with, with stripes that are perpendicular to what would be a curb on a plan set, each of the on-street parking spaces that they want to have count. So it's a matter of, hey, city, you guys are making us build streets in a certain way, and we're good with that, but boy, while there's space that we're building in these projects that people can use for parking, at least let us count some of that towards what you're, you're making us provide. So that's partly why this give, I think, makes some sense.
Yeah, I can see that.
Happy to move on to the next one.
Dave, can't you just call a city and ask what the magic number is out there in Utah? That should be an easy call.
Whatever it is in Utah, and you know what? Said this with some reluctance for 15 years now, whatever's in Utah, plus one for Spanish Fork. Like legit, like it's, it's a real thing. And maybe someday if we have better access to transit or something like that, it'll be different, but man.
We are routinely told by developers of these type of zone projects, we are routinely told, you're crazy. That's a ridiculously high standard. And we routinely say back, much of what you're saying here, like, we, we are weird. We accept it.
And it's chilling too, you know, when we're looking at projects with three hundred and fifty, four hundred homes or something like that. And you think about another half of parking space per home beyond what a developer may be is building in other communities. And you look at just the sea of asphalt. That they would end up providing or constructing to provide that, that additional, you know, maybe it's a hundred spaces that we're requiring or something like that. I don't think necessarily anybody feels like that makes for a better neighborhood.
That doesn't feel, like, when you go to that Walmart development, that's not what it feels like. Like, the parking behind it feels full and the streets are still parked. So it feels like we're almost in the right realm with it. And that's why I have a hard time with this counting the twenty percent because it, it doesn't seem like it's under, like, that we're over asphalted and under utilizing the parking.
Not overparked.
Yeah, overparked. Thank you for saying that better.
But I think with that, with that development, and maybe in Reese, Reese Apartments being another example. I, I don't think you'll ever stop people from parking on the streets because that's the quickest route to my front door.
Right.
And for that guy that has the, that person that has the, the main floor living and the, and the door there, that, you know, they're, they're always gonna park there. And obviously this question gets to, can we, can we take advantage of that? We being the developer and the development.
We, I think, worry of the opinion of, yes, they're doing that, and the two and a half stalls that are required are also filled.
Yeah, and I don't know that I see that, but that's, I think that's what you're saying. I don't know that I see that, but.
When I, when I went by that property or that project, that's what I see. And I, like, that's not, there's no scientific.
Yeah.
Or it's very subjective. It's not objective at all, but it's just what I'm observing. It's not built out yet, right? There's still another whole phase to it.
And there's construction, traffic, or parking and stuff like that. Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, and that part of it that, that comes into play of, of again, Dave's, the requests of the city are, we, we don't want the parking problem either as the developer. They need to show a way that their project is clean and flows and people can get in and out of it too. And so they started to talk about the, the policing of it, of, of permits themselves. Well, here's what you, here's how much, many parking spots you got. And if you don't have this tag in it, here's this towing company that took your car, you know? And regardless of whether it's owned, owned places or, or rented places. So there's other avenues that, that, that I think, I, I think are to be employed.
What if you had a parking overlay zone where you sort of, you could have this conversation about what the requirement for that specific development would be? And the mitigation opportunities if you lowered the number? So that we could have a full conversation about, okay, our standard is two and a half, but if you wanna do something different, you have to use this overlay zone. And to use this, you have to have some amenities that could solve some of our problems.
What, what are you envisioning by way of the amenities or the mitigation?
I don't know. Maybe it's a, maybe there's some overflow parking that is typically not used, but, but if in event of a snowstorm. Or, um, the road is built differently to accommodate this on-street sort of off-street parking. Like, it, it feels like we're trying to talk about where the gray lies without having something in front of us to talk about where the gray lies. And it's, we do that, we do that, we did that today with that overlay zone up on the, the west, the east side, right? It didn't quite meet.
Yeah.
But you put overlay zone and then we can talk about why it makes sense to, to reduce a little bit.
I, I think the master plan development overlay gives already latitude for that conversation. I, I like the idea, so don't take this as, as an argument against it, but Provo City, they have spelled out, you know, um, in very much so a quid pro quo kind of a fashion. They call it a parking reduction. And for example, there, developers will get credit if they construct a bike rack. They will get credit if they buy their tenants transit passes. A year ago, I could have gone farther into lists, but there are a number of different things that they have set up. I don't think we're ready for that or anything like it, but, um, uh, I have thought.
Getting to the conversation that we're having up here though, like, I don't think that we're generally like, no, heck no, don't do this. It's, let's have the open debate and conversation about what does this particular development need in terms of parking? Right?
That's what I am.
I'm, I'm not opposed to lowering it if I know more about why it makes sense to lower it. And some of the, some of the reasons that you brought up, I think are legitimate things. I think that our development standards, and everyone knows up here, if I could put in less asphalt, I would. But that is a good conversation to have in, in this place where it's a very residential local access road. What does it need to be? It could be that we can accommodate parking there and count it if given something, something, right? But if that is the road that is going from the roundabout to Walmart, no, that conversation shouldn't be had.
Right.
Right? So it's just, it's con, it's, it's all about the context. And if we can have that context conversation, I think we could get some creative solutions to it.
I think this language does exactly what I'm hearing you say. Yes. Now, maybe.
Maybe it's because.
Maybe you want.
Couch it in that we have to approve it.
Exactly. So maybe this needs to be augmented to more clearly describe that, you know, the requirement may be granted after the city council thoroughly reviews. You know, a development's, um, proposed way to provide adequate parking while utilizing on-street parking or something like that. But as I see it, this, this just opens up the door to count on-street parking if the council's inclined to do that when a development's proposed.
After we've had a conversation about the parking of the development that's being proposed.
But maybe it's just the percentage for me that does do that, right? If we, if we were to say, exceptionally, this requirement may be granted by the city council for projects R three and R four. Of a development's part, required parking, maybe provide it on-street parking or on-street, right? So if we take out where up to, to twenty percent of the development's required, right? If we take out that, if we strike that from it, I would be good with it. Because I do think that you're right. I think that we can have that conversation in certain areas, but I think that that twenty percent just gives us a, like, it kinda puts that parameters, that box on where we're looking at. Not necessarily giving us the whole gamut of the conversation.
So like, like you had mentioned your example earlier, Dave, of you've got, uh, development that is required to have five hundred parking. This twenty percent reduces it to four hundred. Can we guarantee that there's actually a hundred spots available on-street to make up that difference?
Yeah, the way that this reads, I don't take this as you're entitled to up to twenty percent. I take this as you're not gonna get more than twenty. Like, it's a ceiling.
That's why that.
I do like the idea of having the ceiling. And what we've, this is just what we've told. We're with three different developers now that are contemplating using this one that's full speed ahead. And, um, like, we've told them, you have to identify on your plans, you know, where these parking spaces are going to be. So they're not gonna interfere with driveways or be, uh, located too close to intersections or different things like that. We've talked about as staff, as we expect, I expect that when the street gets built, um, that developers are gonna stripe parallel parking spaces, um, to just again, clearly identify.
Not just in their drawings, but actually on the road.
And on the road. I mean, and that's, that's me, and we haven't necessarily talked about it in depth. Cory and I have talked about. So then does that mean the city goes in every couple of years and redoes it because that doesn't last forever? But we, I think getting that specific, in my mind, that's, that's a logical part of a baby step, at least here.
How wide is the typical park strip?
Uh, eight feet.
How wide's a car?
Uh, usually close to six, maybe just a little bit over that if you go mirror to mirror.
We wouldn't wanna reduce and actually build parking into park strips, would we?
Who's we? I wouldn't, but it's the council.
Thinking it, it would obviously change the look of things, but then at that same time, you wouldn't have to force people to get off of the street for snow removal. Cause they've got a parking stall. Yeah. I don't know that, yeah.
They're using that for utilities though and stuff like that.
That's true. That's true.
Yeah. We have seen people do perpendicular parking.
In certain areas.
To city streets, um, versus, you know, parallel. There they are basically parking in place of the park strip. And usually the sidewalk extends into the property outside of the right of way as well.
It seemed like that development that's up by the mouth of the canyon.
Quiet Valley.
Quiet, no, not Quiet Valley, but then the other proposal, the one that wants to build.
Edge Homes.
The Edge Homes one, it seems like they had designed kind of some.
Some of that.
Some of that, right?
I, I wouldn't be surprised if you're right. I know Creekside, we've talked about the townhome development there, motocross track. They have a bank of parking spaces that are designed that way.
Yeah. And I, and it wasn't on both sides of the street. It seems like it was only on one side, if I remember right.
Yeah.
Remembering that.
Yeah.
And Frank, at that point, I think that is becoming off-street parking too. I mean, I'd be willing to make a case that.
My question is, would they, were they, and I don't remember, but were they counting that as part of their parking requirement?
Oh, they want us to count that.
I'm sure they would.
What if, this section number eight, what if you said, exceptions to this requirement be granted by the city council for projects in the R three and R four zones, period? And then we can talk about whether it's on-street, whether it's just a reduction in parking. I mean, to me, it's semantics a little bit in that you count on-street parking versus a reduction in the parking requirement. Cause you can park on-street anyway.
It's, it's kinda one and the same.
Yeah.
Again, I think counting on-street parking.
You think it's different how?
I think, um, the message is easier delivered or the, eh, eh, developers would receive the requirement better. If we're saying, yeah, we're expecting you to build these streets a certain way and you're getting some credit for that. But I'll tell you, I mean, I, there are dozens of ways I'm sure to write this in such a way that the council has the ultimate say. Um, the twenty percent number here, I mean, it, it's partly, I, I don't wanna signal to the world that, yeah. Design your project with a bunch of on-street parking and you're good. But also it's there, so I assume the council would have some concerns about going all in on this and, you know, you'd wanna have some kind of ceiling.
It seems how much arbitrary for.
It's very arbitrary.
Say, how much say would the planning commission have in this?
What if we put in there the, upon findings, subject to findings, you know, where we, we give language where it forces you to have some specific findings as to why. So it's not just arbitrary, but then they need to give you findings, staff needs to provide you findings, you need to come up with your own. But it's just a little nudge, but it's a nudge in the writing where there's a specific reason why I'm doing it and here they are.
Yeah, I, I think that should definitely be a part of it.
And would that part skip over the planning commission?
They could make some.
Oh, no, they would, I would expect them, I would expect staff to come up with reasons why. I would expect the applicant to give me the reasons why they, they think.
And then let the planning commission debate it back and forth with the developer.
I don't know if that gets you there, but that.
That's helpful.
I don't know if that, anyways.
I think I'd prefer that than, yeah. What's there?
Does that give you what you need there?
You're looking for more.
Reasons why they're asking for it.
Justification.
Yeah, what, yeah.
Yeah, you could, you could go after.
Yeah.
R three and R four zones.
I like that we've.
For the findings.
Yeah, we very, we've narrowly defined where this can happen in R three and R four, which is good. Generally applicable to any street in the city. We get to control the approval process. I get really squishy about the subjectivity of all of this.
Well, and one thing that I've heard, and I think Dave, Cory, Chris before him, Jared, anybody involved in, in development. Just what you're talking about, you know, just how you're molding over this issue, we have never, there I go with absolutes. We rarely gloss over parking and, and it's for the reasons that you're struggling. At the same time, I think some, some of us, maybe all of us have thought, ugh, in this situation, that rule feels too far. And, and so, uh, like you've said, you know, attacking the two and a half, ah, just not ready yet. I need. And I've said this, Dave's probably said this, we're just not ready to do that yet because we haven't seen enough projects that, that solved the problem. You know, we always feel like the Somerset problem is so bad, right? And there's another neighborhood in town that came to us probably a year, year and a half ago and said, you know, would you solve this problem? We, we'll give you the land, just build us a parking lot and, no, we can't. And, um, but there are a few of those circumstances where we felt like this could work. So I, I think I can totally appreciate the subjectivity and, and I think at this moment. That's the best I can feel like, you know, that's the best I feel like we can do to.
To get some of these in front of you.
Get some of them across the finish line when it makes sense.
Yep.
Yep.
How's this for a stat, but maybe being a little bit more specific? So reading that, I'll take it up at the very end, developments required parking may be provided on-street upon finding that counting on-street parking will not create a parking deficiency. Is it that kind of a thing that you'd be looking for? Something that you'd have as a measuring stick, something we would tell the developer, hey, you'd better be ready to plead your case. If that means you're gonna pay parking consultant X twenty thousand bucks to come up with something that's convincing. Or get creative, maybe with some other way to prove that it's not gonna create a deficiency. That's my way of saying a problem and maybe a better way to put it, something with that kinda spirit in mind, um, justification.
Yeah, where it puts it on them, or puts it on the applicant to say, this is why I'm asking for the council to make this exception because of such, such and such. Yeah.
That's good for me.
Yep.
I think that's better.
Then we don't have to approve it if we don't like it.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I hate putting in this that spot. I mean, that's, we get elected for to be making some of the hard decisions like that, so I get it. The first one's gonna come in here at twenty percent.
Yeah, everyone.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, that's not an arbitrary number. That's a number they're talking about, uh, that makes that development work.
And I think you.
You gonna give me that leeway? Here's twenty percent.
And I think you tell us and I've, I've.
I don't know what's in fifteen, twenty, that's.
I'll, I'll, I would give anybody, you know, that's coming in, why don't you go watch council meeting December ten, twenty twenty-four? At the three hour mark to the four and a half hour mark, just that one discussion to get a sense of how easy you think it will be to get the twenty percent. So.
Good advice.
Right? So don't come with just twenties a given, right? That's not the issue. It's, it's really. And, and I think we as staff, when we talk about some of these enhancement overlays, we're having really serious pushes of, you've gotta give a reason why this matters. It's not a given. So like that Roots Coffee, we, we talked to them specifically, like you, you can't just expect this. And, and I think that's one of the reasons why I loved working with them. They got the vision of, we're gonna solve this, this and this problem so we can make that work. But anyways, I think, I don't, I don't know how to make somebody believe us when we say that. But I think Dave and, and all of us associated with development will tell them repeatedly, don't expect that you're gonna get twenty. Come with a plan that's different than just twenty. If.
Unless if there's an absolute very good reason that twenty makes sense.
You've gotta persuade this group.
Then we would.
Yeah, you gotta persuade this group.
Yeah.
And go watch that meeting to get a sense.
You can walk to that transit stop.
Maybe watch the, the item before just to get a sense, right? I'm dead serious, like, just, you gotta, this is who you're talking to.
Was that your last change on there? You had more.
Oh, we're halfway down.
Okay.
That was the heart.
Twenty percent done.
We're, we're rolling though. Um, so, uh, related to that, because it pertains to the R four zone. Allowing projects. And I'm sorry, I'm gonna try to be really succinct. If you wanna do a deep dive, we can. Might need to pull up some plans to see, but. Today we require, like I've said many times tonight, in the R four zones, we're talking typically about our, our more intense residential. Um, today we require, like I've said many times tonight, in the R four zones, we're talking typically about our, our more intense residential kind of developments. It's like, uh, Ridgeline over, uh, Spanish Fork Parkway, um, big apartment building or again, like we've talked about by the neighborhood Walmart. Um, we require buildings in those projects, all buildings to have some frontage on a public street, which incidentally I believe is a really important requirement. But we're now seeing projects that are a hybrid of maybe stacked, um, either apartments or condominium kinds of homes? And townhomes, so, uh, I'll spare you guys names of projects, but working with a few of those. Where when, then they start to design smaller buildings in the, the project, I don't think it makes sense to require every building to have frontage on a public street. In some cases, having driveways access buildings, just from a design perspective, makes sense and affording developers a little bit of design flexibility along those lines to the extent that conceivably they could have, and this is, this is arbitrary, except that it's been proved out on three projects that we're looking at, um, up to twenty percent of the homes in a development not have frontage on a public street. So you still have the majority, super majority of homes in a project that do front on a public street and provided that any buildings that don't front on a public street have eight homes in them or fewer. So for example, if it's a twenty-four unit apartment building, it's still gonna have to front on a public street and kind of walk and talk like we've insisted that, um, developments from a design perspective do, but if you have a triangular shape, maybe part of a project that's hard to design and you want to use a little bit smaller building to, to fit in that area, then this would afford the ability to lighten up on that a bit. I can't imagine it makes a ton of sense unless you've been reviewing projects like this, like we do or designing them like developers do, but. Um, this makes three projects that we're looking at right now conceivably work and you've talked about some of those and you've expressed, uh, your, uh, your potential support at least for those, so. Um, non-compliant structures and non-conforming uses. Again, I'm gonna try to, try to wrap up here quickly. This section of the code for me is a little bit bizarre. I don't know that a lot of cities do have a section of a code where they build in language to allow for non-conforming uses to expand. Oftentimes, communities take the position that, um, uh, you can't expand a non-conforming use because the concept is to have those go away. So if you do allow people to expand them, then you're kind of perpetuating something that is fundamentally you're trying to get rid of over time. Non-conforming uses might be something like, get, um, I'm not trying to get too crazy, but, um. I, uh, now, of course, I'm drawing a blank. Let's say that, uh, uh, Johnny's. What used to be Johnny's there, um, that was a non-conforming use in a lot of different ways. Um, but for the most recent approval, I would say it still is. And, uh, you know, that was allowed to be perpetuated over time because they didn't change it and they didn't really expand it.
What about the Wasatch palette? Was that a non-conforming? Cause I don't think that was.
That was zoned industrial to up until basically when they started to cease operations.
Then it changed.
Yeah, yep. Um. Sorry, I'm drawing blanks on good examples of what maybe a non-conforming use might be. In short, our code, and Vaughn, and welcome your thoughts on how common this, our code right now gives the planning commission the ability conceivably to approve the expansion of a non-conforming use. And in short, these proposed changes clarify some things and take that responsibility from the planning commission and put it on the development review committee. Um, the main motivation for that simply would be to make it easier to utilize, a little bit more nimble. Um, I, I don't think the planning commission necessarily would need to weigh in on a situation like the story that has brought this before us here. There is a gal in town that has a garage that's built on the property line, um, hundred-year-old garage. We haven't allowed buildings to be built on the property line, accessory buildings, at least not something of this size, for decades. So it's a non-conforming use, non-compliant structure, both. And today we allow people to expand those in a certain way, as long as it's not becoming more non-conforming. So if she wanted to add to that in the direction of her property to where it's not, not any more significantly located along the property line, she could do that. Um, in her case, and this language allows for, um, this to happen. Um, she wants to tear down this hundred-year-old garage and rebuild something in its place and have it be a little bit bigger. I think there is a benefit to having people tear down one hundred-year-old accessory buildings and rebuild those with contemporary materials. Um, but if we wanted to allow that to happen everywhere in every circumstance, then we just change the setback requirements and things like that, right? And make it so that people can do that, maybe without having the five feet between a building and a property line that we require now. And I'm not ready to say that, I think that makes sense, that we do it across the board, but this language would give the development review committee the ability to evaluate a case like what this gal has and decide whether or not they think it makes sense to allow for that reconstruction of something that's bigger than what was there and move on. Kind of a simple thing, kind of also not.
Happy to have you guys take care of that and not have it come to us. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's the last thing you guys need to, to take agenda time with, but.
But it never did come to us, right?
It did, it was the plan, which incidentally, I've been here for a while. I don't think that provision's been used in all the time that I've been here, at least not that I can remember, so it's a little bit obscure that way.
So a couple of questions on that.
Yeah.
Changing non-conforming building to non-conforming structure. I would assume that there is a, a situation out there where something is non-conform, some structure. But today is a structure, not a building, that is non-conforming. Is this now retroactive to include structures that are currently non-conforming but are not classified as such?
That's a great question and frankly, we're maybe making this more complicated than it needs to be. Changing the verbiage from non-conforming building to non-compliant structure simply makes this align with what we already, already define in Title fifteen, which is non-compliant structure but not non-conforming building. So it's almost just like a cleanup of language that we have in the code. I think the two phrases are completely synonymous, hundred percent, so wouldn't change a thing, not intended to, it's just a language.
Okay.
Okay, maybe that's, so then we've picked the right term to go with.
Interesting.
Sounds insightful.
I was just saying you got lucky on choosing the right one with state code.
Well, it's maybe because Joshua helped us, so it wasn't, well, we'll thank him.
Okay, so I guess my, my thought was you have this, potentially you have this, um, large, non-conforming tower. But today is not a building. And this code, this changes it so that would be now non-conforming, which would be sort of retroactive. But that's not the intention.
Nor do I think that's the case. So if you have a tower today, we're gonna call that an accessory structure. Building, you know, I mean, a lot of different ways to describe it, but the building code.
Semantics, but.
Requirements that would come into play would, would be the same.
Okay.
Regardless of how we title it.
And then I think, um, the approval DRC. So I have a little bit of a concern of this because oftentimes these non-conformants come from a, a zone change. We've, a property owner is doing their thing and we have changed the zone, right? They had a property right to do that thing, whatever that thing was, and we have inf, we have taken away a bit of that property right. I think that is, so when the request comes to modify that, I think it should be by either an elected body or an approved or an appointed body, not by staff. Because it does, it is a, it is a property right conversation. And I think the accountability needs to lie with us delegated to the planning commission, not to city staff. That's how I'm looking at it. And I think the recourse that that property owner has at the planning commission in a public setting, through a public hearing, I think is, is more protective than a DRC meeting with just city staff. That's, that's my concern about that.
What was the reason for moving it to the DRC? Just for.
Make it easier.
Make it easier?
Hundred percent. Yep.
Because we have meetings where you bring something up here and Shane says, why is this here?
I know.
We're trying to.
So I, I, I see the irony of me having these concerns, but I think in this case, and, and then I read the first one, I'm like, ah, not a big deal, makes it easier. But it like, it is, it stems from having a property right to do something. And I think that that property owner needs that, that harder look and that open conversation. And it, it, I can't imagine this happens very often, so we're not saving much time.
Yeah.
So putting it out in the public and have the conversation, I think is, is beneficial to the process and to the owner that it's impacting.
Does it adjust your thoughts at all considering that the DRC is a public meeting and, and?
Eh, no.
Okay. I mean, it is.
Sure.
Okay.
Not a difficult change to make. I don't think any of us are married to.
I would propose striking that, leaving the rest.
Okay, so leaving.
But I am one of five.
Planning commission as the authority, um, and requiring a public hearing is what I'm hearing.
Back to what it was, yep.
But, yep. Okay.
Yeah, I think.
That's not.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I, I think it's okay. I just think exactly the, what you said Shane, the, the items of this coming up. If, if somebody didn't feel like they were heard or resolved sufficiently or got the description, you can bet which meeting they'd be in next. I mean.
Yeah, they would have appeal rights regardless.
Right. Right. Which my fear about some people, it's, it, the, the way it is, is that some people are like, well, that means I gotta go to a public, that means I gotta come to the planning commission, then I gotta come to city council. How long's that? That's gonna be thirty, sixty days? Ah, all right, ah, ah, I'm not doing it. A little bit of the chilling effect that I've heard from some people and you hope the chilling effect doesn't resort into them.
That's interesting.
Digging a hole and putting in.
Yeah, you sort of have the chilling effect and the protection of having the conversation.
Yeah.
As well, it's, it's a, it's a.
Yeah, a little bit of a catch.
I said what I said, that's my recommendation.
I got a note to that effect, so wrapping up. Uh, it's proposed that for, um, projects that could be zoned R one six, R one eight or R one nine to use what has not been used, yes, we call it the complete neighborhood overlay where you can maybe put like a duplex in the middle of a project with a bunch of single-family homes that we reduce the project size from five acres down to two, which is just opening the door for somebody to make application for the complete neighborhood overlay. And that's it. Um, there's a story behind all of these. I'm gonna be really direct because you might see it sooner than later and if you have concerns, tell me now and we can.
I.
Do whatever's necessary, but the project on four hundred north that you saw either a month or two ago, where they wanted the zoning to R one six. Um, they want to move forward with R one nine zoning, which I think would result in them having five homes on single-family lots and one twin home if this were approved. And the way the project lays out, I think that makes good sense, is having one twin home in a neighborhood with a total of seven homes gonna solve the, the housing crisis in Utah? No. Is it a functional, reasonable, good thing? I think it is.
One's doorstep closer.
That, that's the story behind this and it's that simple. It doesn't change things for any other zoning districts but those three.
I like this tremendous amount, this concept of integrating, um, residential, different type of residential units within a zone, I think makes a ton of sense. I mean, it just, it seems like good, solid planning, so. If we can make it happen by doing this, I'm supportive of that. Record, I can be supportive, just sometimes not tonight.
We got it. So noted.
Okay, recapping on five A, uh, additional language is needed by way of clarifying what we would expect an applicant to provide or to be able to do to prove that counting on-street parking is not gonna create a problem, not gonna create a parking deficiency or something else with your permission. Uh, by way of massaging that, I'd love to get Vaughn's input and thought. Um, I read what I read earlier, which is kind of my initial thought, um, on that. And then on seven, the change simply to, uh, change the proposed language. Um, planning commission would be the authority on it and that they would be able to make a decision after holding a public hearing. Those are the changes that I have from what we've talked about. I might have missed something.
No, I think that's.
That's what I heard.
Worked for me.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Hold on, say there's a public hearing?
Yeah, a public hearing. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing for item E. Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Euler to go into public hearing. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item E. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to this item?
My name is Jake Lastly. I hesitate to get up here, but I sat through it, so I might as well, right?
Yes.
Right.
And I think you're all on, on the, the, the direction I would like to see with the parking ordinance. Um, I was concerned with the on-street parking. I watched some neighbors because they were given tickets of parking on-street. Toward the next door, Snowstorm, they parked up on the sidewalk and the parking strip to be off the street. So, but I think you're all headed in the right direction and I appreciate the thought that you put into it. So thank you.
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing now that entertained a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
By Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilman Marshall. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Discussion back up here for item E. Any other questions you'd like to go over about that? Okay, I'd entertain a motion for item E.
I don't even know how to make this motion.
Well, I think we can, I think you can key in on the, the changes that Dave mentioned.
Whatever changes Dave wrote down.
Could you mention that back when Dave said them?
We need to specify exactly or just include?
Yeah, give us the numbers, five A and seven, seven.
Four A and seven. I thought it was five A.
Five alpha and seven.
On the list here, there's a four A and a four B, but there's only one five.
It's four and five and seven.
So if I was to say I move to approve the proposed, uh, December twenty four, twenty four Title fifteen amendments with the exceptions of the additional language to four A, four B and number seven, would that be sufficient or do I need to give more context, Vaughn?
Yes. Four.
Oh, not B, sorry, four A, just four A.
So it's different. In our, in our documentation, four is additions to the R four zone. Which.
Okay.
A and B.
Now.
And five is addition to the parking requirement. That's how those start.
Thank you.
I think there's language in both. Do you get it?
I've got it.
Okay.
I need it. What is, is it four A, four B, five and seven?
So we were just to say four, five and seven, cause four kind of encompasses both that whole section. Is that okay?
The, the discrepancy is what Dave was working from, his five is R four.
So then what if I was to change it with the additions of the parking requirements for the R four and R three zones?
Right.
And the change to the minimum project size requirements for development, oh, no, that's the wrong, wrong one.
Yeah.
The, sorry, changes to the regulations for non-conforming structures and non-conforming uses to go to planning commission.
Is that better?
Okay, I think you got it.
Did you get that, Tara? You'll re-watch it?
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took, a roll call vote here. Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Took. Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Item E's approved. We're gonna go to item F, but before we do, uh, we got two more public hearings. Trying to be considerate of people we got left. Item E is approved. We're gonna go to item F, but before we do, we got two more public hearings. I'm trying to be considerate of people we got left here. If, maybe what, what we're here for, and if we can get to it, somebody might be here for the fun of the audited financial statements. Is anybody here for that? Okay. What, what is anybody else here for? They want to take a shot at anything left on the agenda? Okay, okay.
The next item.
Oh, that's what we're up on next. All right, well, we're going to Pickler next, and then, yeah, and then we'll see if, we might, we might bring up the audited financial statements, get you out of here before you turn into a pumpkin. Eleven. I don't know.
And then did I hear Miller as well, as well?
That might only take a minute.
Yeah. Eight F, nine A, and nine B.
Well, let's, the Miller preliminary plat that we have, that, we've already discussed that subdivision, the zone change.
I don't have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions about that? It's in the new business section, so it's over the public hearing. Is there anything else you'd add to that, Dave, besides what we saw on the Miller property?
Both the DRC and Planning Commission have recommended that it be approved.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion for item nine A, the preliminary plat, or discussion, if you have discussion about it.
I move to approve the Miller preliminary plat with the findings in the staff report, one through three.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Carden, roll call vote here. Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
And Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Okay, Miller preliminary plat is approved.
I apologize. I did not, in the discussion earlier, I didn't catch that, we didn't address the.
Yeah, sorry, we do, we usually do that and bring it up.
He wanted to hear all these things anyway.
Yeah.
You're better for it. And you're welcome.
Or worse for it.
We won't even charge you.
Okay, item F, let's move into the pickle, indoor pickleball courts.
This is about parking. And I would say that we, we allow pickleball courts, whether we call it like an athletic club or some type of indoor recreational use today. However, the parking requirements that we have for different uses that are spelled out right now would require a lot more parking than what this particular company thinks is necessary for pickleball courts. Let me just add that not necessarily always going to be the case, but I think oftentimes, if somebody were to do something like this in our industrial zone, it's probably not going to be on a standalone lot, although I think there's a facility in Springville that is. Oftentimes, it's gonna be maybe akin to Kids Topia, where somebody's taking part of a bigger building, and they're putting some courts in that. And parking's gonna be shared throughout a project. The applicants have given us quite a bit of information, and they have an expert here tonight that can speak to what they believe their needs are. They've represented that two point six parking spaces is, that is spaces per court, is kind of their ideal. We've done some research, and we found that something on the order of three is probably a little bit more appropriate for our setting here and kind of introduce a safety factor. The Planning Commission moved to approve the proposed change, which would define indoor pickleball recreation facility, and then to assign a specific parking requirement to that of four spaces per court. The feeling is that that, that would require enough parking without excessive parking and open up a door for pickler to have a facility here in Spanish Fork.
Dave, I just had one more question. So if they were to do pickleball and then associated had other amenities in there, would that parking requirement change with whatever those other amenities might be? Or would that, is this just specifically indoor pickleball, pickleball courts?
Yeah, so we would probably divide up the space, and if they had, let's say, twelve courts, they need to have forty-eight parking spaces for those courts. And if they had ten thousand square feet of, you know, maybe just like gym space, we'd run the calc on that, and then it'd be the sum of those numbers. That's what would be required.
Only question I had from Planning Commission.
There is some concern as well about having more recreational type facilities of this nature in our industrial area that we're making a huge investment in than what makes sense. So we'll probably be talking with the council in either January or maybe now February about coming up with maybe kind of a quota system even for different sorts of facilities. That's not something we've talked with you about yet, but something we're working on. Again, we're making a really big investment to try to attract a lot of capital investment from the private sector, hopefully a lot of things that use, use the infrastructure that we're putting in place, lots of power, great sewer capacity, tons of water and the like. My opinion is, is that we can still have both to some extent, the project that these courts are looking to go in right now. I think they have about four hundred thousand square feet developed, and I think this use would take less than five percent of that, so not a huge chunk. But also, we don't want to see that whittled away. So we'll talk more about that later.
Interesting concept. Well, I'm slightly uncomfortable.
Any other questions for Dave before?
The quota or the?
The quota, yeah. I mean, it's, the same thing comes up on the number of car washes in Spanish Fork, right? The number of chicken places in Spanish Fork. Like, who are, we have forever said that we're gonna let the market drive what uses go into those areas. We're gonna say, here are the permitted uses, let the market drive what makes sense.
What makes sense, but at the same time.
That.
At the same time, shouldn't we try and protect the value of the properties for the citizens, meaning if you can get a use that will generate a better tax base for our citizens, shouldn't we try and shoot for that?
It probably is legit, then you should take the permitted use out of the list then.
So it's not there at all?
Yep.
And that's, that was part of the debate that, that at least the DRC had. Having it, having it used here or there, not an issue, really. And so the idea of a quota that you can have X courts per, you know, whatever the distance or, you know, might be, that, that didn't cause us any issues. But you spend up to thirty million dollars on a hundred and thirty-five, hundred and thirty-eight KV power line, and then we don't use it. That's a pretty big investment that, that we didn't use. And, and there's, you create some inefficiencies when you put in a power sub, a power transformer and substation for this structure that, that can handle ten megawatts of power, and then half of it goes to just LED lights for pickleball court, not machinery or whatever. And you create some inefficiencies that actually negatively impact the, the power system. So having it be, having it be spread out actually reduces some of that. So those are some of the concepts behind why.
I understand why.
Yeah, why, why that quota may be something that you want to have at there. One or two here or there, not a concern, but, but if all of a sudden a million square feet went to pickleball courts, that might be.
Loud.
It's indoors, right? But that just might undo some of the, some of the values.
Yep, for sure.
We are fit city, though.
We are fit city. We are fit city. That's unique. Okay, thank you, Dave. No other questions for Dave? If the applicant would like to come up, please, before we go into public hearing?
She's done a lot of time to.
Yes, you've earned this.
Thanks, you guys. I know this is kind of.
I'm sorry.
Sorry? Oh, Rachel Fox.
Rachel, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Apologize. I know this is a unique use, especially for Flex Industrial. We are seeing a lot of shift in the market and across the nation, probably about thirty, thirty-five percent of our box spaces that we are going under lease with are Flex Industrial, and some of them have been around for a while. Some of them are new boxes, such as our Saratoga Springs location, which we signed just a few months ago, and had to do this parking thing as well, and this one as well, which we do feel adds a lot of value to the community. We actually have a lot of communities, mayors, even master planned areas that are reaching out to our utilization because we do have a reservation only approach to our membership. So that is why it's a different experience from your outdoor pickleball courts. I know you have sixteen that are overrun. There's a lot of chaos there. People are waiting for hours to play, and this is, this is truly the solution for that because we do see the love, the exponential love and growth of pickleball. And I play with my boys. I'm no pro whatsoever. But I do see that it adds value and a healthy, active lifestyle from age five to eighty-five. And so bringing in the value, but then also to your, you know, your kind of quandaryings about the use in that space. What we did in Spanish, or sorry, Saratoga Springs, is the other tenants in that area, there were a couple, we call it commercial recreation across the board, because a lot of zoning, they don't know what to call us. But the tenants in that area, there are a couple other commercial recreation spaces, but they do balance it out with your traditional industrial tenants as well, so that the parking can be, be in a good space numbers wise across the board. You don't have any issues with the use versus, and times of day, with where things are going and how things are working. So just so you guys know, last week when I was here, they did, they said basically, you know, worst case scenario, four stalls per court, and this space is planning about twelve courts. So it was about forty-eight. But this is not going to be utilized for tournaments. Our, our, our partners, the PPA, Professional Pickleball Association, and MLP, Major League Pickleball, they're the ones that are getting this into the Olympics as well. They are actually building their own huge tournament space in South Jordan. So none of the picklers across the board are going to have these crazy national tournaments that a lot of people are worried about when parking's concerned. So I just want to kind of mitigate that because this will be just truly for your community. And when I was speaking with the landlord after this meeting last week, they did really, really think that if possible, maybe three or three point five parking spots could be considered, just so that we keep it at a minimum at all times, number one. And number two, if that's not okay, and we stick with four, they would like to be considered for a six-month kind of, a study for about six months, and then potentially come back to the space to renegotiate or, you know, revalue, reevaluate the data, so.
The reason being there, you'd want to put more courts, or you'd want to have?
Not more courts. No. We're taking about thirty-three thousand square feet, so it would really just be so that the other tenants can have a little bit more flexible utilization of that space.
How many employees work at your facilities?
Two, two max.
Two employees.
One running the front and one either teaching or cleaning.
You're asking there, here at Sam, four per court, four parking per court. You've got four people that play on a court at any given time, right?
Two to four. So.
Two, two, four, max of four, meaning two on each side.
Yeah, so our reservations.
Basically saying, sorry not to cut you off.
You're fine.
It's basically saying every single person that comes to play, it's assuming they're all driving their own car along with the two additional people that are parking.
Right, that's worst case scenario. But with our parking study that we've done across the past four years of having, having open picklers, our, our play-by-point software tracks all of this, and it is literally across the board, two point six. We have families and friends and couples and groups, and usually we're not at a hundred percent occupancy anyway. So unless it's a crazy Saturday or something like that, which it doesn't, if it's a regular industrial tenant, won't, they won't be there anyway.
I'm just thinking, if we required a parking stall for every individual that was in our rec center at a given time, how many parking stalls would we need?
Hopefully, a lot.
A lot, right?
That is true.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
I like the idea of saying four and then working it over time, and if there is some data that could, would suggest that three and a half or whatever is adequate then.
So you said you've run the numbers, two point six. Have you shared that with individuals in the city?
Yep.
Dave, what, what have we got that shows the two point six?
That was information that you discussed with the Planning Commission.
Oh, I thought they sent it to you. Sorry.
Oh, they did. They sent it to me, and you reiterated. And one thing that, you know, we try to consider as staff, and we talked about this with the Planning Commission. Rachel described how they operate in terms of having their court time scheduled in a pretty rigid way. So you don't have people just showing up and maybe people waiting around and that sort of a thing. And I don't doubt, but what, if you operate like that, you can get by with probably as little parking as needed. Now, that's not to say that, you know, Citizen Joe that comes along, that wants to get in the pickleball court business, is gonna operate the same way, but our parking requirement probably would apply in a similar way, hence adding, you know, again, some buffer to the number, and that's where we got to four. The original proposal that the DRC discussed was three, and we ticked that up. Yeah, we're, we're learning. This is a little bit of an arbitrary exercise, but we are trying to dial it in. Sight unseen, but what, there's actually Mr. Mann that did some research looking into other communities. It's not out of the order to see communities that are in the three range, three and a half range, or something like that.
I don't know, I don't know the location of where this is gonna be, but if it's in our industrial area, I can imagine there's likely to be a lot of on-street parking available as well, right?
Potentially, and again, kind of by way of safety valve, as was mentioned. Oftentimes, there's some excess parking, particularly we're looking at contemporary, bigger industrial projects. Shared parking, you know, being a likely prospect certainly would be the case at the location that they're looking at.
But I'm, I'm picturing in my mind our industrial area right now, as far as on-street parking between entries of, of these industrial complexes, there's.
Yeah, driveways are spaced out.
They're spaced out a lot.
Long distances. Yeah, that's a good point.
And so for me, I.
Yeah, but there's also diesels coming in there.
Yeah, and luckily, we are on the northeast corner cap right there, so we have the entire east side of the building as our parking and the north side. The south side is where the truck bays are, and they've actually capped those off for us. So if we needed to add more parking stalls back there eventually, they, the landlord's willing to do that. But that would be only for employees or, you know, that sort of thing, so.
I'd be, I'd be of the notion of shooting, understanding that we might be shooting a little bit high because you, you have people that, that play just one-on-one instead of two-on-two, and things like that, and ride together if you're a team, you know, unless your spouse is really bad at it, and you're like, you drive separate, so we're not seen together or something, but.
Yeah, there is a lot of one V one still going on.
Yeah.
And you can make reservations for that as well, so.
I guess my, my fear is, in the industrial area, there's nobody that's gonna walk or ride their scooter here. They gotta drive from where they're coming.
Exactly.
So they are bringing a car, and, and so I guess I wouldn't be opposed to, to looking at the adjustment after you've tested it out a little bit and, and seeing, okay, that makes sense. You haven't used them all.
Right.
You know, let's figure, figure that out, but.
Yeah, I'm assuming you, you have this big box and there's parking all around it.
Yep.
And we would say four per court today and adjust in the future, and those would be reassigned to a different tenant.
Tenant if needed, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, we're not necessarily increasing the number of parking spaces.
Right.
True.
Allocating the amount of parking to this, this business. So it seems like the, we flip that switch six months from now and say, no, it's three and a half, and it goes from your space to business X space.
Yeah. I, I think the landlord would really appreciate that. Yeah. Do you guys have any other questions?
No, appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing for this item.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Marshall. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item F. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So I move.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilman Euler. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Discussion back up here for item F.
Four seems excessive, but I think we have some.
Let's figure it out and start.
Yeah, it's a good starting.
Somewhere. Somewhere. Hopefully that, you can hear that maybe in the spirit of a motion that's being made, we're open to, to looking at that proof of concept. I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed indoor pickleball facility zoning text amendments.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Marshall. Roll call vote here. Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
And Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Item F is approved.
Here not to belabor the issue, but having had some feedback on that concept, at least from Councilman Marshall, on having a quota and a, at least an initial reaction, kind of like what he just did thirteen seconds ago, um, that's something that, from the discussion we had as, as the DRC, that was direction that came from the, our discussion. Does that quota system, is that something you're interested in, or do you not want us to do that?
I, a hundred percent am interested because, for exactly what you described, we're, we're putting how many millions of dollars into infrastructure to develop a certain area.
Right.
I would hate to have that not, and that's taxpayer dollars, I would hate to have that not utilized to full capacity.
I don't feel you.
And we don't have to resolve this today. I'm, I just don't want to spend time on something if you're not interested in it. And so, if you are, I got a no from, not necessarily a no from.
I don't know that I'm not.
I mischaracterize that, but, uh.
I'm skeptical of it.
Yeah, and a yes from Kevin.
But you're, you'd specify it.
And I've got a sideways shake from Jesse, which means, we're going to do the research, we'll bring it back to another long council meeting where we can add it.
That sounds.
Please make it one where there's not, like seventeen.
I think it's a good conversation to have.
Yeah.
We get an email about a, a car wash every other week.
Right.
So, it's a good conversation to have, and a, a vision forward would be great. In that research, I'd want to know, I get the ramifications of the public, public investment, but I was under the assumption that that, that group, that area was going to pay for any investment that was made, whether one way or the other.
Yes, however, there are assumptions associated with the, the, the metrics, that there will be this dollar of, of investment. And, and not to, I, I'm a pickleball player too, in fact, I'm a silver medalist in the Spanish Fork Olympics.
Oh, okay, let's clarify that.
I'm, I'm a one-time gold medalist as well. Actually, I was a double time. Anyways, it's not about me.
It's not.
It's not. But the, if, the level of investment is not the same. And so if we had, you know, they just don't have the heavy machinery associated with some of the, the performers that we've got. So that, I think is where, if, if we don't have that investment, then eventually, the equation maybe doesn't work out. Rachel, would you, or, or would anybody else that you know of be willing to participate in some of the discussions that we have at a staff level? Uh, and then maybe future council discussions as well, in talking about what that quota could look like, how it may or may not be detrimental, et cetera?
Yeah.
Would that be you or somebody else that, you know, let us know and?
Myself and my partner, Chief Development Officers of the Pickler.
Perfect.
We have some data to show kind of some of the benefits, but understanding the, the back end, um, what's it called, investment?
Yeah.
Guys are making for those spaces specifically, that I know something that I'm going to throw out and we can discuss later, but, um, there is a lot of shift in industrial spaces and even, like, I mean, a lot of their spaces aren't even being utilized for a traditional industrial.
Right. So if you're, if you're comfortable, I think, Dave, you, you've got Rachel's information. All right, that, that's great. I think having a insider is helpful in.
For sure.
In being able to, to pick your brains and, and understanding of the, of the industry. Thank you.
I think it's a, I'm, talking about it in terms of a pickleball court, yes, but it's a broader conversation than that.
Correct.
I mean, I don't, how you, how we rationalize a quota on one use versus not on another use, I think is.
Yeah.
Important to have that conversation.
And I don't think it gets narrowed down to that, because as we go over that list, like, that in, that indoor, well, that indoor playground type, all of those things, I think we, we can look at those too.
Got it.
Yeah, thank you. All right, and thanks to you as well.
Thank you, Rachel. Appreciate it. Okay, takes us to, uh, item G on, uh, public hearing.
Want to do the audit?
We'll do the audit, yep.
Let's do the audit.
Before we go to item G, we're going to go to nine C, the presentation of audited financial statements for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four.
Is there anything better to talk about at ten thirteen?
I love audits.
Than an audit?
Maybe I'll go to the rest.
Audits.
This is the third audit.
I wasn't so sure audits were engaging, and I listened to Parking for an hour and a half, and I'm like, maybe audits are engaging.
No.
Um, I've got Cody behind me, he's with Larson and Company, our auditors. Um, one thing I would say is our general fund balance, so that's how much reserves we have in our general fund, which is our main operating fund, ended the year with about thirty percent. We have to stay between five and thirty-five percent. Um, we try to stay between twenty-five and thirty percent, so on the higher end of that, um, just to provide a little bit more funds in case something goes wrong. Um, but I'll, I'll let Cody speak to the audit.
Well, good evening there. Again, my name is Cody Powell, I'm the Audit Manager at Larson and Company. Appreciate you guys' time. Um, I'll keep it relatively clo- um, you know, quick, just because you guys have had our audits many, many times. And so if you go to the independent audits report, I don't know if you guys have it in front of you, I'm not sure.
Mm-hmm.
But what this does is it goes over what our responsibilities are as auditors, and also your guys' responsibility as a council. Um, but the most important part is that opinion right there, um, it just tells us, or tells you guys our opinion of the, uh, financial statements, and it is, um, the statements are presented fairly in all material respects, and so it is unmodified or unqualified, meaning we did not have to modify our reports at all, which means in nerd term, that's a good thing. So, it's a, it was a good audit. Jordan's been super helpful in getting us the information we needed to fulfill our audit needs and things. Um, the rest of it, I'll let you guys read through whenever you want to, to go to sleep easier, whatever. But I do want to go over at the very end, so on page about seventy-seven, whoever's in charge of flipping that, there's the independent audit report on the internal control. So now, we don't give a, we don't give an opinion on the internal control, but we do want you guys to know that we do look over the internal control. So we don't dive like detail, detail into it, but we look enough to make sure that everything's operating correctly. And if there's not, we come to, you know, we come to Jordan and say, hey, there's something amiss going on there, you know, you might want to change this or whatnot. But, um, from what we saw, um, we didn't see anything that caused any material weaknesses on that. Um, and then the next report, just on page seventy-nine there, this we do give an, uh, an opinion on, this is what the state auditors require us to look at. Um, there's, uh, every year, we have to look at specific things, and then every three years, we look at specific things. So right about there in the middle, those are the things that we were required to look at for Spanish Fork City, and it's the budget compliance, restricted taxes and related revenues, government fees, fund balance and fraud risk assessment. Um, so we did a detailed analysis testing of all those items, and, um, it came out clean, so we do give a unmodified opinion on that as well. Um, so then, my next report here is about the single audit. So, we, a single audit is required to be performed whenever you get federal money over seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Um, the main, major program that we did a testing on was the Airport Improvement Program. Uh, I don't know off the top of my head, but I'll look real quick. I believe it was three something million, yeah, three-point-six million dollars. So, what we do is we just grab all the grant, make sure that they're filed correctly, and they was filed in time, and the requests were, had the proper approval, and then we go through each single expenditure, make sure there's nothing that's, you know, that shouldn't be in there, you know, like groceries or something like that. So we just went through that, everything looked good, uh, and our opinion on that is it is also an unmodified or unqualified opinion, and again, in nerd term, that's good. And then, to top it all off, there was no, no findings. Um, so Spanish Fork City did extremely well. Um, hats off to Jordan and his team and for everything they do. Um, but I am open to any questions if you have them.
Not one finding.
Not one finding.
Or you want anyone?
No, but.
Just wondering.
I mean, that's, that's pretty impressive. That's great work, Jordan.
I'm guessing by his disappointment that, yeah.
I know, right?
I'm not disappointed in it, I am.
There's a slush fund you know about.
Unfortunately, I have read many of an audit with findings in them, but nice job, great work.
And we do try to do, we try to look for some type of fraud in essence, but that's not what we're here for. We actually just, we're here to actually test the financial statement, but we do try to keep an eye out for fraud. Fraud's usually caught from the inside. Um, so, uh, we do do interviews with some of Jordan's staff and whatnot, and, uh, so far, everything's turned out well, and so we, we commend you guys, you guys are doing a really good job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate that report. Does Larson let you go in five hours late since you've been here five hours tonight?
Oh, man. No.
We can put in a word.
You just text Russell and let him know?
Oh, yeah.
We can make it, we can include that in our motion if you'd like.
Yeah, well, they're, they're all presenting in other places as well, it's been, December's a busy time.
Okay.
Busy time, so, yeah.
You're all tired in the mornings in December, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate that report.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions further from the council on the audit? Jordan, anything you want to add? It's your time to shine.
Uh, just thanks to staff, um, directors, division managers that make sure we stay in budget, and the finance staff that helps prepare the reports and all that goes into it. Uh, a lot of people making sure the city's dollars are spent wisely and they're accounted for.
I'll add, I'll add one thought. One, I think one of the reasons why we have clean audits includes the, um, the connection between our finance staff and the auditor, not, uh, we don't just see them once a year. Jordan has fairly regular communications where he'll have a question about some financial uh, issue, and, and he'll reach out to the auditor, how, how would you handle that? How would you advise, you know, as he's doing his research? So I think, I think that ability for us to consult with the, with the auditor certainly helps us in, in how we end up at the year, and I appreciate that, that back and forth those, those two groups have.
Well, I'd add to it that I, I think that's one of the quickest ways to have trust eroded in government at any level, is to not have clean audits and, and have things hanging out there. And so, I appreciate, Jordan, your good work, all of the staff and all the different departments and the way you interact with us and, and everything else, because we say it with a straight face and can say it boldly that the taxpayer dollars are being protected and spent wisely in Spanish Fork. So, good work, and thanks for letting us, allowing us to be able to say that with some confidence.
Agreed.
Anything else? Somebody ready for a motion to, uh, accept the audited financial statements?
I move to accept the twenty-twenty-four independent audit report.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, Councilman Cardon won the tie, seconded by Councilman Cardon. It's a roll call vote. Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
And Councilman Took.
Yes.
Thank you. That resolution is approved.
Agreed.
We'll go backwards now to item G. In the public hearing section. Nobody's left in the public.
Pretty sure we're going to have a comment or two. Oh, nope.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
You gonna come out? Um, I'll kind of walk high-level through some of this. If you want to dig into details, let me know. They're pulling up for you? Jack? I wanted to more illustrate some of the, the things that were written, um, in this proposed update, so. So one of the things, uh, as we look at the low-impact development definition, it was geared around a traditional, uh, definition that uses bioretention swells, rain gardens, and some of these beautiful things that I think are, are great in many places. However, as we're talking residential road, um, homes running that with homeowners maintaining that, we ended up with, you know, this, more of these underground storm bricks or different chambers to just infiltrate, and we don't necessarily dictate the above-ground swells or things that are hard to maintain, especially for a homeowner, and people like to see different things. So, we've struggled a little bit with the definition on people trying to get creative to avoid, um, what our, what our drawings show. So this definition brings it in line with, with what's been in practice for quite a few years now. Um, any questions on that? Oh, skipped a couple. Um, one of the things we're finding as, as improvements get near railroads, we're, we're doing diagnostics with UDOT and with the railroad, and on many of them, if not all, one of the checklist items is, hey, we don't want trees within a hundred-and-fifty feet, and we come back with a task to, hey, get rid of that tree. We would love to avoid cutting down trees, and if that's where we're going to end up, we'd prefer not to plant them, let them get mature, and then stir the pot by cutting them down, so, um, this is just an example at Fourth North as we're crossing the railroad, railroad tracks into Mapleton. Um, in this case, it, it is about four trees. Um, but this is kind of where the state law is, or at least the way they're applying on their diagnostics and creating some concerns for us in removing trees, so. I don't know if there's discussions or questions there. Certainly not ideal, I don't think, but it's, it's a side issue in just trying to keep people safe from their standpoint. Another, uh, item that is being pushed, and, and we're not necessarily the ones, uh, requiring this all the time. Uh, essentially, this state rule says, if there's a development or something that's going to impact a railway crossing within a thousand feet, we should run one of these diagnostics. Um, again, in this case, we have development in the area that would trigger this, it's a UDOT road, so the city's not going to necessarily administer this or be involved, but we're trying to get it in here so developers are aware that that can take time, and they need to pursue it with UDOT as they do their access permit, um, and move forward at that approval. And lastly, um, sorry about the colors on here, that's just a development I picked to display this, but in practice, in a few places throughout town, we have this commercial local street that is wider than a local residential. In some cases around multifamily, it makes sense to go a little wider to accommodate the traffic, in a case of it connecting to broader things on the, on the outside edges. In this case, this is, um, where you see the quick quack car wash going up on Main Street and Arrowhead Trail there. We have some multifamily that's coming in, and it's difficult on this scale, but this roadway in the orange is wider, which is this cross-section. It narrows as it enters the residential only, but that cross-section adds some asphalt, I think it's about nine feet, which accommodates things like turn lanes or turn pockets and things to, to just handle the increased traffic where all things come together to move people in and out. Um, so in practice, we've been, uh, applying this cross-section where it made sense. This just adds a little language to say that's the intent in, in certain cases. Um, there were two other minor changes of talking about fabric when we're using washed rock in trenches and compacting around manholes, um, just things we do in practice, but trying to get them written in standards, so. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Sure we will after the public hearing.
I'd say one.
Yep.
On the low-impact development.
Yeah.
Um, so, I like, I like the approach. I think it was sort of playing this guy to rely on a low-impact that just sort of goes through swells and, so, it's better just to store it and then discharge it later. I like it a lot. Um, does it have to be treated to be discharged?
Um, in the sense, as we've worked with the state, treating with these trash racks that are oil-water separators, as well as keeping leaves, debris, garbage out, has been adequate. Um, a couple councils ago, we talked. A couple councils ago, we talked about, um, non-permitted stormwater discharge. I don't remember the exact language. And we kind of got hung up on two definitions of infiltration coming into our system versus infiltration out. One of the definitions of infiltration going out into the ground not being a prohibited discharge is to address that question exactly, saying, uh, we are okay to collect stormwater in an inlet box. We do treat it for some separation. And it is not a prohibited discharge. We are okay to discharge it. So.
Thank you, Cory.
Any other questions for Cory before public hearing? Thank you, Cory. I'd entertain a motion to go ahead and public hearing. Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item G. Anybody that would like to speak to it? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Discussion back up here. Any other questions for Mr. Pierce? On construction standard amendments? I would entertain a motion for item G.
I move to approve the policy 4.39, construction standards amendments.
Motion made by Councilman Took, seconded by Councilman Marshall. Roll call vote here. Councilwoman Beck. Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
G is approved. We've done A. We need to, we need B.
We did B.
We did B.
We did interlocal agreement with Nebo School District?
Yours is different.
This is what we've got. A.
C is ordinance amending Title VII.
C is Title VII.
Geez. We switched it up. Somebody trying, somebody messing with me?
They're trying to trick you.
Okay, so, uh, let's go to C, ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 20, Section 40. Spanish Fork Municipal Code pertaining to the designation of Spanish Fork Historic Sites.
Tyler wasn't able to make it today, so I'm the stand-in. Title, um, VII and Chapter, uh, forty, no, sorry, Chapter, uh, twenty, Section forty, talks about the historic list. And if you remember back in February 2004 this year, uh, we reactivated the Historical Preservation Commission. And it also allowed us, the reason, one of the reasons why we did that is it also allowed us to apply for grant money. As the state looked over our, um, application, they asked if we would nuance some of the things in our ordinance. And one of those things was to make sure that everything, the procedure of how to apply to be on the historical list was laid out in our ordinance. So that's what this does today. So we now have an application process to become part of the historic preservation, uh, list. And then we also have how it will be reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission in Spanish Fork. Any questions that you have? One thing that's important, anyone can nominate a building to be part of this list. But if the owner objects, then it doesn't become part of the list. So no one has to worry that their home becomes part of it just because they got nominated.
Yeah. That last line of three, the commission may not recommend placement on the historic preservation list over the objection of the owner.
Yes.
Seems fundamental. Thank you, Tara.
Thanks.
Questions? This is your thing, Councilman Euler. Any, anything on this besides a motion?
Leading the witness there?
Yep. I'd entertain a motion on, uh, item C.
I move to approve the ordinance amending Title VII, Chapters 20, Section 40 of the Spanish Fork Municipal Code pertaining to the designation of Spanish Fork Historical Sites.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Euler. A roll call vote here. Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
And Councilman Took.
Yes.
Item C is approved. D, resolution approving interlocal agreement with Nebo School District. Use of recreation facilities.
I'm ready. Loaded up on sugar. Yeah, this is the, this is an interlocal agreement, uh, with a school district that we've had in place for fifty-plus years. So what we've done is we've amended this, uh, Section 22 of that is, um, is the, the new section relating to the recreation center. I'm sure all of you have read all nineteen pages. And so.
It felt like twenty-nine pages.
Will you paraphrase?
Siri.
That's what checks GPTs for.
Please paraphrase.
Yeah, I will paraphrase. And basically, this talks about, uh, the district's financial contribution and their use of our facility and what, what, uh, what stipulations are in place. We will be hosting three high school teams at our facility, uh, for practices. It, it specifies how many meets they're allowed to have at practices, right down to every specific time in terms of, uh, when their, when their practices are held, when their meets are held. And we, we worked in depth with, uh, not only the district, but also with, um, some of the other coaches, to make sure that this met their needs as well. Uh, it also includes in here some times for the district if they want to have a, uh, if they want to have a, a district-wide activity for some reason, administrative or otherwise, then they can come in and utilize the facility. But basically, that's what this spells out, um, is all of those details pertaining to, uh, their usage. Now, it's also, uh, it also spells out that this is a, uh, it's based on thirteen years, the amount of money that the district gave us. We will reevaluate that after a thirteen-year period. Basically, they're leasing the facility for all of these uses that are spelled out in here, uh, for thirteen years. And then we will reevaluate that, uh, when that time is up. Um, we did make, uh, a few changes in some of the exhibits. They hadn't been updated for a while. The exhibit section is basically all the facilities that the city uses of the districts and all of the, all of the district facilities that the city uses. We list all those in these exhibits so that they're, they're covered in the agreement. And then we just coordinate with all of those schools and they coordinate with us when they, when they want usage of our facilities.
I think it's important to note that in the review of this and working out some of the details, Dale promised that, uh, the last project that he would do would be the thirteenth year review and then he would retire.
Oh. Sweet.
Stacy is committed to be.
He is committed.
Wow. To run for city council.
I'm in if Stacy, I'm in if Stacy's in.
We're here forever, Dale.
He is committed.
We're here forever.
Tonight especially.
Uh, yeah, for sure. Uh, any, any questions on that? I mean, I, I can go into a lot of details here, but that is the gist of the agreement.
How many lanes are in our competition pool?
We have ten.
So they're only reserved in six at a time, so there's four open?
Yeah, we, we, we leave that so that we've got open swim places for lap swimming and things. So we, we went through all of that detail to make sure that, and that's, that's plenty for them. Uh, we went through, uh, Brad Graham, as you know, worked for us for years and years. He's, he's the coach at Salem Hills and he's very familiar with all of the schools and, and what their needs are. So we utilized him to help us, help us lay that system out.
You worried about running into people at the 5:45 AM to 7:15?
It was more the three to four thirty-one. I'm not worried about it at all. I'm just curious what the capacity was.
Don't want to swim.
I, I think it's, I mean, I, I like that there's still open lanes there. I think that's a, I think that's appropriate. I didn't realize. I figured it would be, it would be a year-round commitment, but it's not a year-round commitment. There's a time frame.
Yeah, it's a season.
Yeah.
It's a season like.
And then it's open.
Yeah.
Okay.
There will be some closures when they have th- those meets. I mean, that'll be a full-on closure, uh, for those.
Of that pool, not the center.
Yeah, as you guys saw, we won't close down the facility because we've, we've built it as such that we can accommodate those people coming into the comp pool area and not have to, not have to interrupt anything else that's going on throughout the rec center. And it's helpful for us because they, you know, when these guys are scheduled to do a lot of their practices and stuff is not our busy time anyway. So we'll have Spanish Fork, uh, Salem and Maple Mountain, uh, in here.
Where are they? They're practicing right now at Springville at what time? Way in the early, right?
Yeah. Early in the morning, late at night, whenever they can find a hole. Because they've got all five of them over there right now.
They stack the lanes, so you swim in the bottom portion and then we swim on the top.
Whoever's more.
Whoever can hold their breath the longest, they just gotta, you gotta stay low and the other one go high.
Yeah, that, it, this actually will be a tremendous relief to Springville, right? They'll go from five teams to two.
Yeah, really will.
Oh, yeah.
And they would, they would receive, in theory, I, I think we would expect they would receive another high school if there was a, a sixth high school in the school district.
So what'd you say? The schools, Spanish Fork, Salem and Maple Mountain?
Yeah, we kept the two Spanish Fork schools here.
Payson's in Salem Pond or what?
No. Payson.
Yeah, the logic there was Sa- uh, Payson's getting on the freeway.
They already got to travel.
Yeah, they're getting on the freeway already, so.
Two minutes there.
Makes sense.
Yeah. So for four and a half million dollars, they get to, they get to use six lanes of our facility. In, in a season for swimming, they get to hold meets there. And they get, it's a, they get a discounted use for the elementary kids to come once a year. And then they hold a, an employee event once a year.
Yes.
For thirteen years.
For thirteen years.
Yeah.
I think it's a deal.
I think it's a great deal for a couple of reasons. One, it's, it's nice to have a four and a half million dollar investment in the capital side of this thing. But, I mean, it's, yeah, it's Nebo School District, but it's our children. So getting them used to and using the rec center, I think is incredibly good. So, great job negotiating this. The whole agreement, though, is, is really, I didn't read the whole thing, but, um, the way that we have maximized the use of facilities across Spanish Fork is, you should be commended for that. It's really, really a good program. And Nebo should be commended for walking into this and, and doing it with us. I didn't realize, I kept score for many years as a young'un in basketball at, at the junior high or the high school, and I never realized, I never made the connection that this was a Spanish Fork rec program being operated and maintained, you know, put on in a school like that. I mean, that's, it seems unheard of. But it is, it, we could not be successful as a community without it. So congratulations. It's a great job.
Well, and I think I've, I think I've said this before and, and you touched on something that's really important that I don't want us to lose sight of. Uh, as a city or an elected body. This agreement needs massaging. It needs work. It needs continual, because you have turnover here, you have turnover on the school board. You have turnover with the principals, which is really where the rubber meets the road, right? We're constantly explaining the agreement to them. They don't get it. But this is so rare, you won't find it anywhere else. Not even in the state of Utah. Even within Nebo School District, they try to, they try to mimic this same, and they have these agreements with them as well, but their working relationship and they will tell you isn't, isn't as good as it's been in Spanish Fork. But this is historical. I mean, uh, you know, Jack Swenson and the counterpart set this up fifty-plus years ago in order to build, not, not double tax the, the people so we could share facilities. Great concept. And it's actually amazing that we've kept it alive this long. Because there, there are some conflicts. We have, we have some battles with them every year. Because they, they're coaches, they own the facilities. What have I got to share this with the, with the city for? And our guys on this end are, why do I need to prep baseball fields for them? It's, you gotta, you gotta continually educate everybody that's involved, uh, including the administrators as to the value of this, of this agreement. And it's, it's, it's invaluable for us. And we've, we've been fortunate enough that the elected officials have saw it that way as, as has the, the, the district.
Our, uh, my nine-year-old just finished up wrestling season for the first time using the brand-new wrestling room in the high school. And that's just another great example of the, our rec, rec department using high school facilities to benefit everybody in our community.
Yep.
It was great.
And it, and it's tough. I mean, if you think about the pressure that's on the schools, uh, that's why they're building new schools, right, and bigger schools. And if the population grows, it's, it's, it's easy for them to squeeze us out. But, uh, and the same thing with us on our end. So it requires some, some continual t- tending, if you will, nurturing to keep this agreement in place.
You think of the ramifications of not having this agreement. One, we build facilities.
The rec center would have five basketball gyms instead of two.
Well, part of the, part of the reason.
More than likely don't have them.
Yeah.
Just don't, yeah, you don't have the program.
Part of the reason we don't have rec centers or hadn't had rec centers in South Utah County is this agreement. I don't need a rec center. I've got access to way more gyms than we can build. So most of the need for that came from community recreation, having to have a place to house our programs. And I think that's why we're so late, Springville and Spanish, getting on board with the, these types of facilities is because the need wasn't there internally for our programs to have a place to take, to happen. Uh, we, we have it in the school. So it's going to be really nice for our center because this is going to be a true rec center where people can come and drop in and enjoy the facility and not have to worry about scheduled programs taking place all the time. It'll be truly for the public's use.
But again, this contract lays a foundation for us to be able to be successful in the, in the recreation center portion now of this contract, which I think you should be super proud of too. But, but I'll go back to, you have to have a key or you have to, uh, you know, besides your junior jazz practice that you get once a week and then your game, when would you ever get to go shoot a basketball? And, uh,
Zero places.
Zero places in this November, December, January, February. And so.
Fourth of July. Who wants to go out there and shoot on that basketball court in July?
Yeah, but, but even that, I mean, there's not a lot of out there unless you just get your own hoop at your house and just try to do it. But, but I'm telling you what, this, the advantages that are gonna, what you're gonna witness, Shane, is better basketball. That's what you're gonna get.
So Dale's said this, and let me just reiterate, our appreciation to, uh, the superintendent and, and his staff. Maybe list a couple of those.
Yeah, there's, this, this isn't me. I mean, there's a lot of parties involved here. A lot of my staff, a lot of the district staff. Vaughn and Reed, Park at the district, uh, a lot of, a lot of hands on this that have, that have helped bring this to fruition. So it certainly isn't, uh, certainly isn't just me. They've done all the tough work.
Well, thank you. And, uh, and yes, thanks to the district as well and, uh, and, and their, their committees and boards and the, the full-time folks there too. Just a, a good, good marriage, good contract and happy to, happy to put a signature to renew it for sure with the added component to it.
Perfect. Okay.
But, somebody has to make a motion for that to happen. I was on my way to a motion.
I'll, I'll go ahead. I move to approve the resolution approving interlocal agreement with Nebo School District for use of recreation facilities.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Took, seconded by Councilman Cardon. Roll call vote here. Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Item D is approved. Takes us to E, workers' compensation agreement.
Unomas. Unomas. We have Carson Hardy here, our r- risk manager. He's the new ideal candidate. I don't know that you've had, uh, city council meeting opportunity to interact with Carson yet, but Carson started with us four months ago, six months ago, a year ago? No.
Yeah.
Four months ago?
Feels like a year.
He dresses like he's from Spanish Fork.
Came to us via Orem City and, and, uh, do, is doing a great job for us and, and, uh, wanted the opportunity to come and present something to the city council meeting. So we said, yeah, come at 10:47. So he got showered up and, I'm just kidding.
Forty-seven during NFR week.
Mayor and council, before Carson gets started, I wanted just to point out that there's a resolution associated with this one as well. It's an interlocal agreement. It's buried on page fifteen. So if you could, when, if you decide to approve it, approve the resolution that approves the interlocal agreement.
And do they need to do anything for the other document, the binding insurance?
Sorry, hold on. I'm not sure what you're.
I know you guys are excited to be here this late, so I'll try and keep it to the hour. Just kidding. No, it'll be short and sweet, I promise. No, it'll be short and sweet, I promise, as much as we want to stay here until midnight. So Spanish Fork City is very financially prudent and so we go out to bid for workers' compensation every three years. That ensures that we're getting competitive premiums on our workers' compensation policies. So that happened again this year. So we recently underwent the, a competitive bidding process and a big component, the two major components that go into our premiums that we pay as a city are payrolls, so how much we pay our employees, which always goes up every year for any organization, and then our experience modification factor. And I wanted to bring this up. The city, you know, the leaders, you, city council, mayor, executive leaders have really embraced a safety culture in Spanish Fork City. And that investment has not only permeated across the departments and, and our employees embracing safety, but it's been a, brought a great ROI for the city in that our E-mod factor lowered to a .76 and the industry averages a one. So you know, we're almost 24 points below what other, other cities are performing at. So that investment has helped the city significantly. Our current premium that we pay for workers' compensation is just under $250,000. Because of our investment in safety culture and despite having increased payrolls, our premium is actually going to be going down to $196,000. So we're saving just over $51,000 of taxpayer money because of our investment in, in workplace safety. So we will be moving away from our policy with WCF and transitioning back into a policy with the Utah Local Governments Trust, who we've had coverage through in the past. The coverage begins January of the upcoming year and will end June 30th of 2027 with the option for us to extend that if we are liking the premiums we're getting and the services we're receiving as a city. And this transition not only saves money for the city, but it also brings in some other notable perks for us, training opportunities for our employees, access to the Franklin Covey All-Access Pass and Leadership Institutes for our employees to have access to free development opportunities, monthly motor vehicle record checks for the city and the Utah State University Mental Health and Wellness Course for our employees if they want to participate in that. So there are a lot of benefits and I just am very pleased with Spanish Fork City so far and our employees. They do care about each other. We are a family and we're watching each other's backs and that has paid off, not only in keeping our employees safe so that they can go home at the end of the day, but it, it helps the, the city significantly. And, and as Vaughn said, there's a resolution on page 15 for us to enter into an inter-local agreement with the Utah Local Governments Trust. But I can answer any questions about the agreement or workers' compensation if there are any. It's a riveting topic, so I.
You've only been here four months and you've saved us $55,000, so good job.
You know what? It's been.
It was all him, right?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Do we have plans for that 50 grand? Does it go back into safety initiatives or can we spend it just?
At the moment, we don't, right?
The, I think we got the bids probably two weeks ago. The current budget has funding at the full level, so in this fiscal year, we would realize probably $25,000 of the 50. That's one thing that Carson and Tyler have started talking about, you know, do we want to do something with it? Do we want to take the savings? I'm certainly open to any thoughts you have in terms of, of what you would like to see done, if anything, with, with those specific dollars. They're not all in one source, so you know, probably, police have a higher rate, firefighters have a higher rate, and then most of our public works guys have a higher rate, so it's probably about 50/50 across all funds, but there's, I don't know, without doing any math on that. So 25 would be in the general fund and then 25,000 would be spread throughout the other enterprise funds. But anyways, yeah, if you have any suggestions or, or thoughts, we'd certainly love any feedback if you've got it.
I like the idea of reinvesting it back into safety for whatever that is, like continue the low end of the Iman, whatever program you can put in place to do that. I think it's a, a wise investment and we're not saving, we're not spending any more dollars. We're investing our, into our employees.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a crack at that and see what we can do. There's always a desire to enhance those efforts, so appreciate that.
Absolutely. Make the steel toe boots more steely.
More steely. Have you seen a pair of steel toe boots?
What's that?
You've seen what still toe boots look like?
Know what they feel like, Jesse.
Okay.
I've seen them. I think you've seen them from across the world.
So Vaughn, page 15, the resolution means you want us to read this resolution?
No, you don't need to read it. Just approve it.
Approving.
And so that we can fill it out and this will be one of our officially approved resolutions.
Okay.
Yeah, probably just simple, I, I move to approve the resolution approving and entering into that link.
Yeah, that top line.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion.
Move that we approve the workers' compensation agreement along with the resolution on page 15 that approves the inter-local agreement.
Motion made by Councilman Euler.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took. A roll call vote here. Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
That's nothing compared to the resolutions on Arbor Day.
Bill puts you to work.
Yep. Okay, anything else that needs to come before this body? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Motion made by Councilman.
Who else wants to?
Carden.
Second.
You're not going to add in your.
I gotta get that, I gotta get that verbiage.
Seconded by Councilman Marshall. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Or adjourn.
I'll give that verbiage.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Travis.